Okay, ladies and gentlemen, it is April 23rd at 5:00 PM. Per our posted agenda, we will be going into executive session. We have a full dais. Glad to see everyone here tonight. There will be two items we will discuss in the executive session. Item 2A, City Council shall convene into closed executive session pursuant to Section 551.074 of the Texas Government Code to discuss the appointment of an Associate Judge. And 2B, City Council shall convene into closed executive session pursuant to Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code to confer with the City Attorney regarding the status of building Bastrop codes. Just a reminder to the public, we will start our regular meeting at 6:30. If executive session runs that full-time, we'll come out and announce any decisions. If we get done with executive session sooner, we'll announce decisions, but the regular meeting will start at 6:30. It is 5:01 and we are in executive session. It's 20:00. Council has been in executive session. We are now out of executive session and we are in recess. We will reconvene at 6:30 with motions from our executive session and start our regular meeting. So we'll be back at 6:30. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is 6:30 and we are back in regular session. Council went into executive session at 5:00 and I believe we have a motion.
Sorry, I was looking for my glasses. I move to appoint Caroline McLymon. Did I say that correct?
McLymon.
McLymon to the Associate Judge position for Bastrop.
I have a motion from Councilmember Rogers.
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Peterson. Is there any further discussion? We appreciate the, we had two applicants. We appreciate both applicants, the time and effort that it takes to apply for a job, and I appreciate council making a recommendation. All right, Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Rogers.
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones.
I was not included in that.
She recused herself.
Councilmember Ennis.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Nelson.
Yes.
The motion passes four to zero. Madam Secretary, I apologize that I didn't clarify that Councilmember Jones had recused herself. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're on item four at 6:30. We are called to order and tonight, we are lucky to have Dylan Redman. Dylan, if you'll come stand up here and stand at the podium and turn around and face the audience, I'm gonna talk about you and they want to see you and see you smiling. Is Emily James in the house? I, okay, if Emily walks in, she was to be included too, but we have Dylan and Dylan is in fifth grade at Cedar Creek Intermediate and Dylan likes reading and science and right now they're doing biology and he can answer all your questions about plants. And his dad is a land surveyor and he thinks he might want to be a land surveyor too. So, tonight, Dylan, you can turn back around. Ladies and gentlemen, if you will please rise, Mr. Redman is gonna lead us in both of our pledges. Let's give Mr. Redman a round of applause. Mr. Redman, hang on just one quick second, we're gonna get a picture of you so you can have proof, maybe you'll get extra points in reading or something.
Yeah, I believe George Wash-
Ladies and gentlemen, if you will please rise, Pastor Bob Long is going to give us our invocation tonight and I think he has a few comments on National Day of Prayer as well.
Yes ma'am, thank you, Madam Mayor. As you know, y'all just signed a proclamation on the National Day of Prayer, which is May the 2nd, Thursday, this week but next week, and from 12 noon to 1 o'clock at the gazebo. We've been doing this many years, the community comes together and prays and the mayor will be there, the county judge and many other dignitaries, but the main thing is that we're gonna pray. So, we'd like for you to come join us. If you're off on your noon hour and just wanna come and pray for a moment and leave, we'll understand because any chance we get to have the community praying together is a better community and that's what I'm gonna do right now. Thank you ma'am. Lord God in heaven, as we come before you, we want to give you thanksgiving for the privilege that we have to live, to work, to play, and to pray, right here in Bastrop, Texas. We thank you for our city. We thank you for the city workers. We thank you for our mayor and city manager and these councilmen that are here. And we just ask that you bless them and give them the wisdom and discernment they need to make godly decisions for our city. We pray, Lord, that they would have your grace as well as wisdom. We pray, oh Lord, for those who watch for our safety. We pray for our first responders, our police department, fire department, and those who watch for our safety even when we're asleep. Thank you, Lord, for all the other work that's done in our city. We thank you for the work that's gonna be done tonight, lead those who address the council and, Lord, we're just grateful to have this opportunity tonight to hear from people and we thank you for all that you do for us. Lord, as we look at our weather, it's been great. We want to thank you for that. The weatherman says there's difficult weather. Well, we're gonna pray that we'll have rain but no hail, wind, and tornadoes and we just thank you that you can do that for us. So we pray for the future as well as tonight, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you Pastor Long. You can all be seated. Okay, we're already on the second page, council. We're moving right along. All right, we're on item 7A, which is the mayor's report. I have a couple of items. I early voted yesterday. I was number four, but I saw that Pastor Long had his, I voted. If you haven't voted, please, please vote. And a reminder that the, you are not voting at the county annex, because I know some people who showed up at the county annex to vote to find out that the ISD Service Center, Bastrop High School, and there's several schools, but this, this local election is for school district and city council, so please, please make sure that you vote and election day is May 4th. The second thing that I have is, you might need your patience this weekend. It's exciting, but be excited for the fact that the BPMS-150 is this weekend. There will be 9,000 cyclists, but I'm extra interested in five. We have Team Bastrop, which, and I'm gonna make him stand up, Chief Altgelt is gonna be riding. Chief Nagy is gonna be riding. Allison Land is gonna be riding. And the city manager's husband Travis Gilli, who is not here, but we're gonna give him a round of applause too. And Jimmy Crouch. So that is Team Bastrop. So if you get into town and you get held up on the 28th by the cyclists, just know that you're looking for Team Bastrop and be glad that you didn't ride 150 miles on a bicycle. So, that's going on this weekend, wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that. Another thing for anybody that's watching at home or knows some really good kids, the Bastrop Youth Advisory Council is taking applications through 5:00 tomorrow and so if you've got some kids and know some people that might be interested in that, please make sure that they get that turned in. Those go, those applications are due and they, I believe they go to the school. Let's see. We had some, some pretty shocking news this week and several of you know Chief Yarborough, who has been the chief over at Bastrop Independent School District, his son Brandon passed away and his service is tomorrow. If you would please keep the entire Yarborough family in your prayers and thoughts, that's a shocking thing to do and we know that their family's going through a difficult time, so if you would keep them in your prayers, I'd very much appreciate it. Yep, you can go to the next one. So, Bastrop was named one of the APA Great Places and when I put my mayor's report together and turned it in on April 11th, I didn't know they were gonna have a complete presentation, so we're just gonna skip on by my slide and go to some of the things that I've been doing. In the upper left-hand corner, the YMCA Air Fitness, they relaunched their unit. That is myself, the Executive Director of the YMCA and Mayor Pro Tem Nelson. We all got out there on a Saturday morning and you can tell that we were really, really exercising. Below that, the Piney Creek Chop House celebrated their fifth anniversary and yes, that is my most perfect youngest grandson, who is the Junior Ambassador for the city of Bastrop and has found out ribbon cuttings are one of his favorite places to be because there's normally food, especially when it's at Piney Creek Chop House. Below that, I went to the human trafficking meeting and really appreciative of the Rotary and the other folks that have pulled that together. That's something that goes on in our community whether people realize it or not and there was trying to bring some awareness and some education about that. I attended the Best Breakfast. BEDC hosted that and the speaker was from Workforce Solutions and some of our Best Breakfasts had dwindled down to not a really high attendance and we had over 30 people in the room and it was a really great opportunity for folks to share things. Above that, the plant and book sale that the Friends of the Library put on, they had, it was going gangbusters. I met one person who'd made three trips for plants and was calling her husband to bring her more money, so I know that they raised a good bit of money and it's such a great thing to do. On the upper right-hand corner, I was at Career Day at Red Rock Elementary and got to speak to all the fourth graders and I got thank you notes from a whole bunch of them in the mail today and one of the things I took was a big map and showed them what the city limits was and one of the thank you notes said, "Thank you for teaching me you had, to be mayor, you have to live inside the red line." So I appreciated that one. And then I also went to the chamber luncheon and they featured the Children's Advocacy Center and also CASA and that was a great luncheon as it always is. The planned events from when I turned in my report, I did make it to the Youth Career Day. I did not make it to Bastrop Market Days. Yes, I thought I might melt, so I didn't forge out in the rain on that day, but on the 14th, I did go to the Spring Gala. We've had several meetings, I feel like I've been at all of them, and I did vote on Monday, the first day of early voting. Then on the next page, we have upcoming events between now and the next council meeting. Tomorrow night, council will be right back in this room at 6:30 to have our mid-year budget meeting. On Saturday, there is a bird sit out at McKinney Ruffs that sounds really cool. You don't have to hike really far, somebody else will explain to you what you're looking at. I would encourage you to participate in that. I will be at a funeral in Houston, so I won't be attending that. On the evening of the 28th, this table on Main and as a reminder, that is when the MS Ride will be going through Bastrop. On May 1st, the second graders of Emile Elementary will be coming by, they're doing a walking history tour and they're gonna come by City Hall. And I will be attending the Central Texas Civics Day for Generation Citizen in Austin. On May 2nd, the other half of the second graders will be coming by and we also have the National Day of Prayer and I'm not sure if it's being rescheduled, but the synergy ribbon cutting is that day as well. The 4th is the election, I'll be at the library board meeting on the 6th. On May 9th, you'll all be getting something in the mail. There is a Come and Go rodeo regarding building Bastrop that will be from 3:00 to 8:00 PM at the Bastrop Opera House and then on May 14th, it'll be time for our next council meeting. So, that's a little bit about what I've been doing. Councilmember Ennis, do you have anything to report tonight?
I'd like to draw everyone's attention to a new exhibit at the museum. It's on the 150-year history of Calvary Episcopal Church. It's an exceptional exhibit and it showcases the tremendous fabric of our town through 150 years, so if you have a chance, stop by, I think it's worth a visit.
Excellent, thank you, Councilmember Ennis. Councilmember Jones?
In that same vein, I took, with all the girls in my family, I took a tour of the painted churches out in La Grange and Schuylundberg and it was pretty exciting. There's a lot of features in those churches that are real similar to Calvary, so there's a lot of things connecting us together. This week, I was guest speaker at Gateway and I spoke to several classes there. It was a pretty, pretty awesome experience and appreciated the opportunity to represent the city there.
Thank you, Councilmember Jones. Councilmember Peterson?
Thanks, Mayor, nothing to note.
Councilmember Rogers?
I did want to mention how you said that you can vote at the high school. I think that that was a wonderful thing for them to set up the voting at the high school, so the seniors or the ones that are 18 can get involved and see the involvement of voting, because I think it's important that everybody gets to see that. So that's the first time I've ever seen it actually be able to vote at a high school, so I thought that was really cool, so I thought that was a good idea.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Rogers. Mayor Pro Tem Nelson?
Yes, ma'am, ma'am.
All right, city manager.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, I just had one more thing I wanted to say. Friday and Saturday is the area track meet for the high school and there's three events that I know of that we're running in, so I'm gonna be going to that in Houston. That's for regionals.
Thank you, Councilmember Jones. City manager?
Mayor and council, at the last council meeting, the mayor received a request from a young lady who was interested in council passing a law that bans texting and some other things that are unsafe and asked that we put an item on the agenda at this meeting. Our city attorney has been very diligent in drafting an ordinance that's currently being reviewed by staff, so on your May 14th agenda, you will have a draft ordinance that goes beyond the state law that was adopted in 2017, that essentially says drivers cannot send or receive electronic messages. It prohibits using cell phones in the first six months of your driving. It also restricts usage in the school zones, but what we'll be proposing is changing texting to distracted driving and address some other items such as making, receiving phone calls, speaking, listening into phone conversations, viewing, taking pictures, using a GPS system. All of those kinds of things will be things we'll bring forward and make sure that they're used in the appropriate manner so that we remember first and foremost when we're in the vehicle, it is there for driving. So, wanted to publicly acknowledge the plea and let you know that staff in the City Attorney's Office is working on that and we'll bring you something back for consideration on the 14th of May.
Thank you very much, city manager, I appreciate that. City Attorney, can you clarify for me, what is, did the current state statute, does it address hands-free or is that something that we would be addressing in our ordinance?
Another name for your ordinance that's in draft form is hands-free, because all state law truly did was prohibit the texting or the emailing, the typing of a message back and forth to someone. There's other things that drivers could be doing with their phones, using their hands, that are called into question. And so, the ordinance would be allowing them to use GPS, music, and all those other features, but they need to have a hands-free function in order to do that.
Okay, excellent, I appreciate that. And council, I appreciate you guys being agreeable to having that looked at and we'll look for that on May 14th. Okay, we are now to the proclamations and Colin, I'm sorry I didn't tell you this in advance, but we're gonna be jumping around the agenda. I will let you guys know that we will be doing 7D, E, F, and G, which are all of the proclamations. We then have the Great Places in Texas presentation and after 7H, I will be taking 12F and 12J. And I think there's some folks in the audience that are very happy to hear me say that, but that's, just giving you a heads up that that's where I will be going next. And after 12J, we'll be going to 12K because no city council meeting is complete without talking about the chickens, so. Okay, the first proclamation is for the Nurses' Day and I think I have some nurses, if y'all would all come forward, please. These are specifically school nurses, so can you, and it's gonna be hard for folks to hear, but say what school that you're from? 23 years as a school nurse, that's very, very impressive. All right, whereas students are the future and by investing in them today, we are ensuring our world for tomorrow, and whereas families deserve to feel confident that their children will be cared for while they're at school, whereas students today face more complex and life-threatening health problems requiring care in school, whereas school nurses have served a critical role in improving public health and ensuring students' academic success for more than 100 years, and whereas school nurses address the home and community factors that impact students' health, whereas school nurses support the health and educational success of children and youth by providing access to care when children's cognitive development is at its peak, whereas school nurses understand the link between health and learning and are in a position to make a positive difference in, for children every day, and whereas the National Association of School Nurses celebrates and acknowledges the accomplishments of school nurses everywhere and their efforts of meeting the needs of today's students by improving the delivery of health care in our schools and offers gratitude for the nation's school nurses who contribute to our local communities by helping students stay healthy, happy, in school, and ready to learn, keeping parents and guardians at work, not just on National School Nurse Day, but every day throughout the year. Now therefore I, Connie Schrader, Mayor of the city of Bastrop, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, May 8th, School Nurse Day. Let's give these ladies a round of applause. Okay. Mayor Pro Tem Nelson, are you gonna receive the air quality?
Sure.
Whereas air quality can threaten our environment, economy, and the health of the residents in the Capital Area Council of Governments region, whereas air quality is improving in central Texas region, air pollution levels were considered moderate or worse more than 30% of the days in 2018, and whereas CAPCOC supports the Central Texas Clean Air Coalition, the coalition's effort to promote regional air quality, now therefore, the city of Bastrop joins the Capital Area Council of Governments in declaring the week of April 29th through May 3rd, Air Quality Awareness Week. I've asked Mayor Pro Tem Nelson to accept this because he is our representative for CAPCOC and for the Air Quality Board. Thank you very much. All right. Okay. Come on Trey, who'd you bring for Arbor Day? Okay, you're getting the abbreviated version. Whereas Arbor Day is observed throughout the world in many languages and cultures, whereas trees provide environmental benefits by providing shade for people in our buildings, removing air pollution, abating stormwater runoff, and providing wildlife habitat, whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of happiness and enjoyment, now therefore I, Connie Schrader, Mayor of the city of Bastrop, do hereby proclaim April 26, 2019, as National Arbor Day. All right, okay. I can't say saving the best for last, because somebody will get their feelings hurt, but come on firefighters, come on up here. Chief Rosales, you want to stand at this mic and introduce who you've got with you here tonight?
So, I'll introduce Stephanie Dimmaville, firefighter Chris Spooner, firefighter Dylan Judd, support staff is Gina Spooner, and support staff Sonia Judd, and firefighter Chris Stone, and Captain Gilbert Dimmaville, and then myself, Andres Rosales.
You notice the common last names. When you're in this business, it ends up being a family affair really quick and they're family to each other, whether they're in, have the same last name or not. Whereas International Firefighters' Day is observed each year on May 4th to honor and remember past firefighters who have lost their lives while serving their communities, to express gratitude to those who have served in this line of work and to show support and appreciation for those who presently serve, and whereas firefighters follow a long line of tradition and honor that inspires them to help colleagues, neighbors, and strangers alike, and whereas at a moment's notice, thousands of firefighters, both career and volunteer, risk their lives every day by quickly responding to uncertain situations to mitigate danger through such efforts as search and rescue, hazardous materials response, and combating the threat of destructive fire in order to protect individuals, families, and economic being of our community, and whereas firefighters make the ultimate sacrifice to protect the citizens they serve where danger is the result of natural or man-made disasters, as witnessed by fire suppression deaths and other contributing causes, now therefore I, Connie Schrader, Mayor of the city of Bastrop, do hereby proclaim May 4th, 2019, as firefighter day in the city of Bastrop. Let's have a round of applause. All right, is it Matt? Yes, he's walking this way. We're on item 7H, Presentation of the Great Places in Texas designation by the Texas Chapter of the American Planning Association. Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mayor. I won't take too much of your time, because I just want to introduce Chance Sparks and my staff real quickly. I don't want to steal his thunder, so I have with me my planning team here. We have Viviana Nicole Ham-
Your planning team that needs to move forward and face the audience.
They need to move forward, sorry about that. We have Viviana, she's our planning technician, Jennifer Bills, she's our assistant planning director, Allison Land, our planner, and Allison Long, our- And Allison Long, our other planner. Middle initials don't work, because they're also, middle name is Michelle. So, we're working out the details on that, but we'll get there. We're super excited for this award. We were thrilled when the announcement came out. And it's just, it's a real honor to be recognized at the state level by your colleagues and peers for something that you do day in and day out that does impact everybody's lives in the City of Bastrop. And it's also a testament to the vision of the council and P&amp;Z Commission. You all set that vision, and it's just our job to implement it. So, we thank y'all for y'all's vision and allowing us to do our jobs on a daily basis. So, with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Chance Sparks. He is a president of, president-elect, excuse me, of the Texas American Planning Association. So, Chance.
All right. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. I'm really excited, because one, this is really close to my house, and also, I saw the fifth anniversary for Piney Creek Chop House, which is where I'm headed right after this. So, the American Play Association Texas Chapter, we created this Great Places in Texas program, kind of as our state's own rendition of a similar program that's done by the National Association. Our idea being that we could probably do it better. So, Great Places in Texas, it recognizes the Lone Star's great places, the neighborhood streets and public spaces, and celebrates how planning has played a vital role in where we live, work, and play. Program promotes and recognizes great places while celebrating stories of exemplary planning that resulted in stronger and healthier communities. A neighborhood can be based on a specific plan or the result of a more organic process. In the case of Bastrop, you have a whole lot of both. And it's really, it really plays out fabulously when you walk around the streets here. These neighborhoods in our program are selected on the basis of seven criteria involving livable built environment, harmony with nature, economic resiliency, interwoven equity, healthy communities, responsible regionalism, and authentic participation. And this is the part where I tell you a little bit about the city that you already know, but it's kind of our own planner spin on it, I guess you could say. So, what really stands out to us is Bastrop is an example that you do not need to be a big city in order to have big city results, and that you can be comfortable in your own skin while you do it. That is probably the best way to summarize what's gone on here in Bastrop. You demonstrate that authenticity and new ideas can and should coexist, and they will actually build upon one another. One of the phrases that jumped out in the application was this phrase, "historically hip." And I thought, where did that come from? And then I come here and I see, "preservation of the past, progress for the future." I'm like, okay, it's the, I guess, the modern take on that same phrase. And it clearly captures kind of this culture of the character of the people and of the place itself, how it feels when you walk around. And what's great about this is that Bastrop did this by doing, by putting its locals first. You didn't try to figure out, what do the tourists want? You figured out that if you make it what the locals want, trust me, the tourists are gonna find it anyway. That's what's happened to me when I've come to Bastrop. And we love the focus on, you have arts and music, multiple safe modes of transportation, and you've got this great human scale of buildings. It makes it, makes your downtown, it feels cozy. It's a good descriptor. And we've really been watching with excitement over the last five years with these steps that you've been taking in your planning. You moved forward with a new vision for the downtown, through a downtown plan. You had to put together a form-based code. And now you're going through the building Bastrop code process right now, which is like the next iteration of this metamorphosis. And you've got a great team working on that, by the way. Matt's a friend of mine, I've known him for a while. So, really, to sum it up, though, congratulations to you as the elected leadership, to y'all as city staff. And what I understand is a small army of tireless volunteers that populates this city for making downtown a truly great neighborhood. We have this great little plaque for y'all that will present. I would present a certificate, but Representative Sirier was so excited when we showed him the certificate at Planner's Day of the Capitol that he kept it. So, with that, that's the story here.
Thank you very much, Chance. Congratulations, Matt and the team. Let's give them a round of applause. All righty. We are moving on to Item 12F. Individual consideration item that we will be voting on. It is 12F. Consider action to approve Resolution Number 2019-38 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, recognizing May 11th, 2019, as World Migratory Bird Day, and authorizing the Bird City Coalition and appropriate city staff to continue to pursue, pursue, to continue pursuit of certification in the Texas Bird City program, providing for appealing clause and establishing an effective date. Mr. Joe?
Just being at the end of the agenda, sorry. Threw me off. So, as you know, we applied for the Migratory Bird Day, and were denied, but they've asked us to extend it into 20...
No, we applied for the Bird City designation.
The Bird City, sorry, designation. Thank you for the clarification. Anyhow, the state came back, and they're wanting us to resubmit in 2020. And what they're asking for was a resolution. This is basically what you have before you. Once we pass this resolution tonight, the staff will allow us, will be allowed to submit again for 2020 program.
So, this resolution does two things. We're acknowledging the word World Migratory Bird Day, which is important to the Audubon Society, and then asking for you to support the resubmission of the Bird City designation.
Correct.
A motion to approve. I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Jones.
Second.
I have a second from Mayor Protem Nelson. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Marjus?
Yes.
Councilmember Deuce?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, Council, we're now going to Item 12J. It is on page five of the agenda. Consider action to approve Resolution Number R2019-40 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, supporting the Daughters of the Republic of Texas to pursue funding for the Stephen F. Austin and the Baron de Bastrop sculptures to be created by Clint Howard, owner of the Deep in the Heart Art Foundry, with no matching funds from the City of Bastrop, providing for a severability and repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Are you ready? Yes.
My name is Vicky Rose. I'm the chapter historian for the Baron de Bastrop chapter of the Daughters of the Republic of Texas. I don't think anybody would call us historically hip, but we are devoted to history and hoping to leave Bastrop and the world a better place. Thank you. Well, sorry about that. Who are we? We are a linear association dedicated to perpetuating the memory of the founding families and soldiers of the Republic of Texas. Our organization would like to donate two statues to the City of Bastrop, one of Stephen F. Austin and the other of the Baron. These statues would be life-size plus 25%. Austin founded the City of Bastrop and named it after his good friend, the Baron. In addition, we want to donate a plaque explaining who Austin and the Baron were and why they are important to Bastrop and Texas history. The questions we ask ourselves is, what does Austin look like? What does the Baron look like? I think I skipped one. Oh, sorry. What does the Baron look like? We have no real images of the Baron, they don't exist, but we do have descriptions. He was a beautiful and sturdy figure, a calm, sweet, and pleasant face. He was affable without pretensions. He was captivating. He was also called fatally attractive, and he was capable of looking like a Baron. What's the reality? Every image of Stephen F. Austin looks slightly different. The Baron came to Texas in a fancy carriage, dressed to the nines in finery. By the time he met Austin, he was destitute and living in squalor, yet he was still capable of influencing people in high places because of his demeanor. He was 60, and he looked 80, and he was bald. So, what to do? George Washington really looked as handsome? Probably not. A statue is an idealized depiction of a person meant to convey something about him or her. What do we hope to convey with these statues? We hope to show that Stephen F. Austin was a serious, dedicated pioneer who gave meaning to a vision of Texas. We hope to show the Baron's personality, a captivating, pleasant, handsome rogue who found redemption in helping people build new lives in the wilderness. Our ultimate goal is to show very, two very different people working together for the good of Texas. Now, where would we like the statues to go? We checked out a lot of places. The sidewalk and the bridge are really too narrow. Without support of other structures like log cabins, et cetera, they would probably just be lost in Fisherman's Park. The state will not allow the Baron on the right-of-way of Highway 71 or 21. The live oak tree will grow to obscure statues placed in Berry Park. So, we came to the conclusion that we thought that the best place to put the statues would be in front of City Hall, with the understanding that if the city did do something with the bridge, that they could be moved at a future date. How will we do this? The Daughters will raise the funds through grant writing and various fundraisers. Once the statues are completed and paid for, the Daughters will turn them over to the city. The statues will become the property of the City of Bastrop. If the city ever decides to get rid of the statues, ownership would revert back to the Baron de Bastrop chapter of DRT. If that chapter has dissolved, then ownership would revert to DRT at large. What we need from the city, if you decide to do this, is a letter of partnership stating if we purchase the statues, the city will take over ownership, displaying and maintaining them. And we need a contract stating what I said before. It always seems impossible until it's done, and I'm sorry, the Bastrop store didn't turn out right. Clint's gonna take over from here.
Thank you. What you see before you is really what I would just consider a quick sketch study we propose. There's been no extensive research done in clothing and attire. Assuming this moves forward and we get approval, we'll have models come in, and we'll actually set them up and document the clothing and make sure everything's historically accurate. But we're depicting Stephen F. Austin, obviously, as a pioneer, ready to go into the wilderness with his gun and his, you know, everything. And then, obviously, the Baron and the finery, and they're standing here, looking at a survey, deciding where Bastrop's gonna go. And so, the concept would be that they're, you know, right up front of City Hall here, just slightly looking off to the left. So, that's the composition. Be happy to answer any questions.
Council, do you have any questions for Mr. Howard? Councilmember Jones?
So, it's gonna be a true monument piece, which is pretty exciting for Bastrop to have.
Life in a Quarter puts them at about seven foot six, just standing. So, as the way it's built here right now, with the small base underneath it and his top hat, he'd probably be eight and a half, nine feet from the bottom of the base to the top of his hat. So, yeah, true monument.
So, what made you decide to pick Bastrop for this?
Ms. Rose, I need you to speak into the microphone, or they can't hear you.
I'm a lifelong Bastrop County resident, and our chapter is based here in Bastrop. We've done some things for MacDade. We'd like to do this for Bastrop.
So, City Manager, she's asking for a letter. Can you help me get a little background on the resolution? Do we still need to do a letter, or got anything you wanna share with us?
The resolution essentially is going to authorize support for the Daughters of the Republic to pursue funding for the sculpture. It states that it will be created by Mr. Howard, and that essentially, in this, we accept ownership. We have already a collection of public art, so we would add it to our insurance policy. The important thing for us from an administration standpoint is that we have the right to move it. We appreciate that it makes sense for it to be at City Hall, but sometimes moving public art around the community gives it new light, new life. And as we work toward preserving the bridge and having a public park, there may be an opportunity to really display it in a way we don't even know today what that looks like. So, this, all of the things that were outlined in her presentation are in the resolution. And by approving this, then it will give me the authority to write the letter that she needs. And we will work with our city attorney to draft a contract that would then allow me to do so, because you've approved this resolution.
I just, I wanna personally thank Ms. Rose. She called me almost a year ago, I think, and just really appreciate them wanting to give us something so wonderful. Are there any other questions or comments? Mayor Protem Nelson?
A couple of comments. Despite some of the pronouncements by other cities in the state of Texas, like Anacodota and Santa Barbara, saying it's been the oldest city in Texas at 1837, we all know that 1832 was when Bastrop came about. So, this visualization is going to be an excellent example and showpiece for those people to perhaps learn Texas history correctly. So, thank you.
Councilmember Ennis?
I'm very excited about this proposal, and I'd like to make a motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Ennis.
I second.
I have a second from Councilmember Jones. Is there any further discussion? Fantastic work, as always, Mr. Howard. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Ross?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Thank you. The resolution is unanimously approved. Thank you so much. You guys have a good evening. All right, I'm moving on to the chicken and rooster relocation. It is Item 8E. And when Chief Al Gilb gets done with his update, we will be moving to Item 12K that is also related to the chickens. Chief Al Gilb?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, City Manager. It's time for our update on our chicken relocation project. On Wednesday, April 10th, we had a three-hour period that we had six city employees, and two of them being from the public works, where we did another operation. We weren't as successful as the first operation, and we netted eight chickens, but I was very pleased that five of those were roosters. So, we're still eating into, into the population. If you've driven around lately, you'll notice that, that all the low-hanging fruit have been captured, if you will, and that there's still a few. A lot of them that you can hear and see are on areas that we're, that we're calling sanctuary for the moment, and that a change in the ordinance and the administrative warrants will allow us to take care of that, and we'll talk about that at a later time.
Chief Al Gilb, we just wanna clarify that when we're eating into the population, we are relocating them to a safe place.
We are trapping them in a humane and safe... Sorry for the play on words. That was not intentional.
Thank you.
I wish I could claim it was, but it wasn't. But yes, we are, we're catching them in a humane way, and we are adopting them out just like we have in the very beginning of the program. So, one of the things that we're looking for is, we will pursue administrative warrants. We're in the process of sending that to our legal team to review that our affidavit and our warrants are sufficiently sound. And we, once we get that in a positive, we'll pursue serving those simultaneously on one day, so that the chickens really have no, no barriers, that we can't go on and go from there.
Can you speak to when you anticipate in the near future that is likely to happen, the next 15 days, 30 days?
The next 15 to 30 days, yes, ma'am. So, I'm gonna overpromise and hopefully underpromise and overperform. So, the second thing that we'll talk about that's in the next ordinance is a change in the harboring definition. We've had several dialogues about having to keep a chicken, prove that they've had it for three days, or to meet the definition of keeping, maintaining, or harboring. And so, what's proposed in the next item will be that we're gonna eliminate the three-day requirements. We're also gonna change, put a change in the definition of harboring that I think you'll find will be very beneficial. I think it'll help us quite a bit. As of noon today, we have caught 203 chickens for this entire process. Eighty-one of them have been hens, 55 chicks, and 67 roosters. I want you to know that our Animal Services Officer, Amy Jordan, started this project on March 11th. So, just approximately six weeks, we have caught 101 chickens. So just approximately six weeks, we have caught 101 chickens and relocated them to other places outside of the city limits. That's 101 of that. So I'm going to tell you that it was under her leadership, her coordination, some of the chickens she actually caught herself, the team effort that we've had from the Police Department, from the Public Works, going from helping us catching the chickens, going back again to taking the time to make the traps, and the community supporting us and helping us that we've been this successful. So I'm very excited to report that in six weeks, we have caught 101. There's a breakdown, so you can see where we are at from March to December 2018. In March, we came up to 135, and right now, we're at 203. I'm available for any questions that you may have.
Good job. Thank you very, very much.
So that's 68 in April? Was that, or is that cumulative?
Well, you know what? I messed them all up. 68 in April for a cumulative total from the beginning of the project, or its inception, 203, sir. Yes.
Great job.
Thank you, Rick. 68. And we still have another, more days left in April.
Yay.
So we'll continue to go on.
Any other questions for the chief? Okay, so that was just a presentation. Appreciate the update. Councilmember Ennis, it is my understanding that you would like to keep this as a standing agenda item. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Appreciate that. All right, everybody, we are now moving to page five. And I really have to read this whole thing? City Attorney?
Just the first few lines, ma'am.
All righty, he's my friend. All right, we're on item 12K. We're in the middle of page five. Consider action to approve the first reading of ordinance number 2019-15 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, amending the Code of Ordinances, Chapter 2, titled Animal Control, Article 2.01, titled General Provisions, Section 2.01.001, titled Definitions, amending the definitions of various terms, et cetera. It's all yours, Chief Alkelt.
Thank you. So as I alluded to previously, this ordinance is doing a couple of things. The primary thing that it's going to do in relation to our feral chicken problem is it's going to eliminate the three-day requirement for consecutive days for harboring or for keeping the animal or maintaining it. And the definition of harboring that we're proposing will be the act of keeping or caring for an animal or providing premise to which the animal returns for food, shelter, or refusing to allow the animal's control to impound an at-large stray or feral animal on the property. So by this, if we come to the property owner and we say, "You have feral chickens in your backyard, will you allow us to come on?" When you say no, you are by definition deemed to be harboring and are in violation of the city ordinance. The rest of the ordinance is some housekeeping that we found. Our city attorney realized that when we talk about estray livestock and the impoundment of livestock, we were performing the same duties that we pay the sheriff to do, and the sheriff actually has two estray deputies that specialize in that. That is a task that, as a municipal police officer, I would never want the city to undertake. The responsibility for catching them, maintaining them, advertising, selling, conducting the sheriff's sale or the estray sale and doing everything in the law is just duplicitous. And since we already have experts, subject matter experts, that are taking care of that, I would recommend that we repeal that section of the ordinance so that we can allow the sheriff to continue to do that business. I'm available for any questions about the ordinance that you may have.
Thank you, Chief. So, Council, he has outlined this would be the first reading, and I would, if you are so inclined, if anyone would like to make a motion, you might include that it be included on the consent agenda for May 14th for the second reading. And this ordinance, as written, does all the things that you were cleaning up. It's been blessed by our city attorney.
Yes, ma'am.
I move to approve and place it on the consent agenda for our next meeting.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Ennis. I have a motion.
Second.
Oh, it was a race. Mayor Protim Nelson won the race and is the second. Any further discussion or comments?
Yes. Chief, I really appreciate the due diligence you've taken on this process. This is, it's either a joke to some people, or it's very serious to some people. The fact that you've taken it on as serious as what you've done and consulted with our city attorney and the staff going out, they should be commended for making that effort is something that's beyond their job description. So, thank you.
Well, I appreciate that, but all the credit goes to our team. Thank you.
And I'd like to reiterate Mayor Protim Nelson's point that for the people who think that it's funny and a joke are not the ones that are paying for their houses being destroyed, don't have kids that can't walk on the sidewalk because there's chicken feces all over the place, and it quits being funny pretty quick when it impacts the quality of life of our citizens, which is why we're trying to get it taken care of. I really appreciate it. I know that there have been a few of our citizens that possibly haven't demonstrated the very best behavior, and on behalf of them, I apologize that you guys have been put through that, and just very much appreciate and support what you guys are doing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
You are executing the policy of this council, and I appreciate the fact that not everyone is in agreement with that.
Thank you.
Any further comments? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams? Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. The motion passes unanimously. Ma'am? I'm sorry. Did we get everybody?
And I just had a question. On Bill Ennis', when you asked him if he could leave it on the agenda, I was wondering if he wouldn't mind moving it to maybe once a month instead of every single agenda?
The chick?
No? Okay. Just ask him.
He's giving you the no.
Okay. Just ask him.
All righty. Okay, so 12K is approved, and Colin, I promise I'm trying to help you out as much as I can. What we are going to do next is 9D for my friends at Visit Bastrop, who have already worked a long, hard day. That is on the top of page three. Receive a monthly report from Visit Bastrop. And when we are done with the Visit Bastrop report, we are going to take a break. I have no one signed up for citizen comments, so we are, because no one has signed up to speak, I'm considering item number 10, Citizens' Comments, complete. When we return from a quick bio break, we will be doing the consent agenda, and then we will move to item 12A. So just trying to give you a little heads up. All righty, Ms. Smith?
Hi, good evening, Mayor, City Manager, Councilmembers. My name is Susan Smith, and I'm going to go over our public relations summary with Ashton La Fuente, who's our marketing manager.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Ms. Umble. Let's just jump right in. And we'll talk about marketing first. On slide two of our report, we're reporting for the month of March, so we're seeing really good increase, almost 400% over the last year. That is reflected in our live campaign that we just started, the branding effort. Now that that branding effort's complete, we basically hit the airwaves telling people about our destination. So the increase overall for the month of March, the significant increase for that month can be attributed to our live campaign. Some of the pages that people are interested in on our website are things to do, our onsite activities, and our events. So that is indicative to, you know, it's spring, we're getting ready for summertime, and so we monitor what people are looking at. It just helps us determine what we want to blog about and what we want to talk about. So we do watch that. Where people live that are viewing our website, Houston, Austin, Dallas, Bastrop, the Woodlands, College Station. So we kind of watch that. Year-over-year growth, from last month in February, we had about 10,000 people on the website, and this month, we had about 16 and a half thousand. So we just, it's just really great growth, so we just want to mention that. Down at the bottom is our social media stats for the month. We monitor these as well. There's a slight decrease in our fan following on Facebook. We have a huge following, which is about 44,000. We do see some ebb and flow there. It's not a large amount, so we're not really concerned, but we do watch it. Our Instagram platform is fairly new to us, so there's a really good growth there, and we're really gaining our followers there. So on to page three of the report is a true PR update. We work with an agency to pitch Bastrop as a destination, and underneath the proactive outreach for article generation are the publications that we pitched Bastrop to, to hopefully garner some awareness and get some articles generated. On page four is some of the outcomes of that proactive outreach. Last month, we secured some coverage in Animal Wellness Magazine, talking about Bastrop Music Festival as a dog-friendly event. So we shared that on our social media. And then we also partner with the Bastrop Opera House. They have a year-long programming that they do, and so we help talk about that stuff and pitch it to the various calendars for people to come. Page five is kind of some looking ahead initiatives. I won't talk about all of them, but the three bottom ones are some big projects we're working on. We have a huge need for a visitor and meeting planner guide, so we have engaged our agency to begin working on that. We've also developed a newsletter to reach both of our market segments for tour operators as well as the visitors, the leisure visitors. And then we've also just rolled out a blog. So not only do we work with our agency to help have other people write about us, but we've also just started to tell our own story. So we're really excited about those things. Any questions?
Councilmember Jones?
I just wanted to, and I'm sure you're probably going to do this, but it would be, seems like it would be a good plan to make that very digital. I mean, when you do that, is that something y'all are thinking about?
Absolutely. It will definitely be in digital format. Yeah, and it will be, yes, absolutely. I think we're thinking about that first.
Thank you, Councilmember Jones. Any other questions for Ashton?
Thanks.
Good job.
All right, going into the STAR report, this is reporting for the month of February. I'd like to just point out that we are continually in a growth pattern with our lodging industry. It's very strong. The biggest numbers that we have are with the Hyatt. That also shows us that they're doing very well. So within the next 90 days, we will have the parks as part of this, and we're working with Marcus to get the outdoor, the parks and recreation areas included in this report. So we'll have some, it'll obviously, the numbers will go up a little bit, but it'll also give us a more truer picture, not just so much the Hyatt. So I don't really have anything other than that to say, other than it's great, it's going up, and no red lines. The sales report for March, these are our leads that we presented to our partners. This is not including the Hyatt. And we presented eight leads in the month of March, which have an economic impact of around $1.2 million to our business partners. So this is business that we've offered to them to bid on. Our year-to-date, which is something new I've added to this, so since October, we have pitched 2.4, $2.3 million in potential business to our business partners. For the month of March, we had one definite lead that closed for an economic impact of $85,000, and our year-to-date business that has actually closed since October is about a half a million dollars. So that's, we're right on track for exceeding our actual budget. Service requests are things that do not require heads and beds. We had four of those. We had one definite service request, and we had one lost lead, which was Hotel and Convention Center was too small. And we are tracking these, and we'll be able to give you a report on those at the end of the year. We also have a new category in here this month, which is unable to bid. So we took out of our leads that we have been presenting since October, anything that was just silly for us to be even considering bidding on, something that needed, you know, a half a million square feet or something like that. We're not going to put that out to our partners to bid on if we know it can't happen. However, sometimes they're not so-so big, but yet they're not, they still don't fall in. So for future planning, we'll have a list of things that we couldn't bid on and why. So, and then we had no new lead assists or definite assists with the Hyatt. We still, we have a lot of things pending, but nothing has closed yet. Any questions on the sales report?
Mayor Protim Nelson?
Really no questions. I mean, under Ms. Smith's leadership, the growth and the efficiency of Visit Bastrop is obvious, and I really appreciate that. And I know our agreement currently calls for us to have a report from you once a month, and it's, it seems a lot of reports in the course of a year. I know, I believe we have a meeting coming up with, a joint meeting coming up with their board sometime in June?
June, yes, sir.
Is that what y'all are whispering under y'all's breath at some time? See, and I would really like for us to discuss and consider moving this to once a quarter. I think that in doing so, we can get the October, November, December events, which are a lot of events, and perhaps get a report from that quarter, say, the second meeting of January, so that we can get a fuller picture of what's going on rather than these truncated little reports.
Exactly.
And I would really like for the council to consider that.
I would like that as well. I think we can have a more truer picture in matching with our STAR report, because our STAR report, we're reporting on February, and then in this report, reporting on March, but we're already through the end of April.
Mayor and Council, the reason that this is on the agenda monthly is it is a contractual requirement. And so once we have the board meeting with the Visit Bastrop Board in June, if it is your pleasure to change this, it will require a contractual amendment to the existing contract.
And what I hear, Council, is Mayor Protim Nelson would like to propose that. Is anyone opposed to that, strongly opposed? Okay.
I am.
Councilmember Ennis?
I've wanted it to stay monthly.
Okay, so are you agreeable to, we talk about that at our June meeting? Okay. All right, great.
All right, one more thing is just to review some quick activities that we've done, we had in the month of March. Bastrop hosted the Zuma Run, which is the women's race series that you ran in, and we had an estimated 200 room nights with 550 estimated attendees of an economic impact of $98,000. We also had a sales and marketing managers' meeting with the Hyatt sales managers and the Convention Center. We have, I'm participating in weekly legislative calls for anything that impacts tourism or the hospitality industry. Three of our, myself and two other employees are attending Best Leadership. We'll be graduating in May. We've attended some chamber events. We're continuing to do site visits with our partners on a regular basis. We have the music festival coming up, and we have the Corvette Invasion coming up, so we're in the planning stages of those. And our sales symposium, we attended in Houston. And the wedding extravaganza at the Hampton Inn in March was a huge success.
Fantastic. Thank you very much, Ms. Smith. Any further comments? Councilmember Ennis?
I'd like to amend, not amend, but just add to my comments. I understand your thoughts on the matter of limiting the amount of presentations, Ms. Smith, but I, our citizens expect us to properly monitor the work that y'all do. And as a new organization, relatively new organization, I think it's important for us, maybe down the line, but I think it's important for us to continue to monitor it on a monthly basis, is where I'm coming from, so that we meet the expectations of our citizenry.
Understood. Thank you.
We'll absolutely have it as an agenda item for the joint meeting, and we can make a decision then.
Okay.
All right. Okay, as promised, thank you very much, Ms. Smith. You guys are free to go. Thank you for your time. It is 7:35, and we are in recess. We plan to take about a five-minute recess. We will come back and do the consent agenda, and then we will be going to item 12A. Item 12A. 7:35, and we are in recess. All right, it's 7:45? Do I just start with that? I have. Okay, I've got a quorum at the dais at 7:45, and we are on the consent agenda, which is on page three. We have four items on the consent agenda. Counsel, does anybody want an item pulled from the consent agenda? Council, does anybody want an item pulled from the consent agenda? Does anybody in the audience want an item pulled from the consent agenda? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, if you'll please read the consent agenda.
The consent agenda reads as follows. Item 11A, consider action to approve the second reading of ordinance number 2019-2019, regular meaning in April 10, 2019, and April 17, 2019, special callings. Item 11B, consider action to approve the second reading of ordinance number 2019-2019, of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, granting a conditional use permit to allow a whole new square foot accessory structure on Tavichu Village, Unit 1, Lot 19, Lot 598, Lot 9, and 600 located at 149 Mahero Court, in Area Zone SF9, Single Family 9, within the city limits of Bastrop, Texas, as shown in Exhibits A and B, setting out conditions including a severability clause and establishing effective date. Item 11C, consider action to approve the second reading of ordinance number 2019-2019, of the City of Bastrop, Texas, implementing a higher program to authorize the sale of food from local food vendors within the city limits, and to establish a mobile food vendor permit process for the product program, providing for items of fact, purpose, expiration date, enactment, veracity, report of severability, effective date, and proper notice and need. Item 11D, consider action to approve the second reading of ordinance number 2019-11, of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, amending the Code of Ordinances, Chapter 2, titled Animal Control, Article 2.01, titled General Conditions, Sections 2.01, 1.001, titled Definitions, amending the definitions of feral livestock, poultry/fowl, and wild birds, and 2.01, 1.007, titled Injury or Destruction of Wild Birds, amending the position for the exclusion of certain birds from the section by adding chickens and repealing all prior ordinances that are in conflict here with, as attached in Exhibit A, and providing for items of fact, enactment, effective date, and proper severability and proper notice and need. This includes the consent agenda.
Great job, Madam Secretary. Thank you so much, council.
Move for approval.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Peterson, a second from Mayor Pro Tim Nelson. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I got information while we were on break that I didn't have before we were on break. So Colin, here's what we're going to do. We're going to item 9A, receive monthly update, development update from Matt Jones, because we have staff that's been here all day that can go if we will do that. And following 9A, we will be moving to item 12E regarding CenterPoint Energy. Mr. Jones, we're on 9A, council, bottom of page two.
Thank you, Mayor, for taking that in consideration. I appreciate it. So this is just our monthly development update, our mission and our purpose for the, for the pleasure of those viewing at home or the packet online. So I'll get right to it. So we had a couple new hires in our department. We have Eddie Benavides, our new building inspector, and then Allison Long.
If you're going to introduce them and you've made them stay, they got to come up so we can look at them.
I thought they were behind me. I just assume everybody follows.
Did you hear Mayor Pro Tim Nelson? He said, "That's not good planning on your part."
Yeah, it's not. So if y'all turn.
Okay, you have to face the audience. Yay!
This is our new planning and development staff. They're both within the last couple of months, and I've just asked them to come here. Some of you have met them already, but for those that not, I'll let them just say a few words.
All right, I think I met a lot of you at the day on the Capitol, but it's nice to see you again. Allison Long, I live in Austin, and I graduated from UTE's planning program. So excited to be doing planning, so thanks for having me.
Welcome, Allison.
How you doing? It's a pleasure to meet you all finally. I'm out in the field a lot, so I don't get a chance to bump any in the hallways very much, but it's a pleasure to see you finally. My name's Eddie Benavides. I'm a building inspector. I come with 18 years' experience, commercial, residential, and so I'm a pretty confident inspector, and I appreciate being a part of the puzzle for the city of Bastrop. Thanks.
Welcome to both of you. Welcome to the team.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, so, all right, so this is our March to April. I'll point out that this is actually a 30-day. It's not March and April, it's just 30 days that happen to fall within March and April. So the counter visits, we had about 200 folks stop by, permits, we issued 78 pre-applications. We held 19 of those, which puts us at 1330, 481 permits issued, and then 97 respectively. This is our moratorium matrix. So total permits issued since the, the moratorium went into effect in August is 607, 458 trade permits, and 149 residential and commercial permits. We've done the exception applications, 21, 22 exception letters issued, processed 45 exemption applications, 43 have been approved. We've held 114 pre-submission meetings, and we have eight on the schedule coming up.
Quick question?
Yes, you may.
That was in stereo. Councilmember Rogers, you can go first.
So how can you have more letters than you have applications?
Bingo. Great question. I asked the same one. So there was a couple of projects that were currently in the process, Pecan Park Residential, that were already queued up, that we preemptively issued letters for because they knew. And so without having to go through the process and hold up current projects, those were issued. You bet.
Member Ennis, was that your question as well? Okay, all right.
So some of our, the new certificates of occupancy, we have a new Sprint store at 594 West Highway 71, Hunter's Crossing Apartments, the apartments formerly known as the Village Apartments. We issued certificates of occupancy for buildings 1, 6, and 7, so they're moving right along. Limitless Texas Automotive at 304, 304 Perkins Street, Falcons Garage at 308 Industrial, His and Her Barber Shop Salon at 102 West Highway 71, and then On the Surface Solutions at 2804 East Highway 21. Just a quick update on our commercial projects. We have Stem and Stone. They're still trucking along. A lot of the stuff they're doing is interior at this point, so not a lot has changed on the outside, but they're still targeting a May completion date. Home Goods, you can see they've started putting a facade, the skin cover on the facade there. So again, they're still moving along, about 65% complete. Seaton Hospital, again, a lot of interior stuff going on there, but still targeting an October completion date. The Mini Stores, there's folks out there working today, so they're still in progress, moving along, and again, December completion date. And then the Lost Pines Professional Building, they've started installing some of the roof decking and some other things, still in framing, about 30% complete on that. Residential projects, so we approved, or you all also approved, a couple of new plats for Pecan Park. So there's now 151 lots under development out there. Piney Creek's still at 77 lots, the Preserve at 140 units, and then again, Hunter's Crossing, formerly the Village, at 182 units, and we've now issued a few COs for those buildings. Some training, I was fortunate enough to attend the National APA, American Planning Association Conference a couple weeks ago now. And it was great, enjoyed the opportunity, was able to learn a lot and meet with a lot of different planners from not just the state, but the nation, so that was a great opportunity, so very welcome.
I like your proof of attendance. That was to make sure you got reimbursed for your expenses.
But yeah. No, and a few of the events we did, we went to the Chamber of Commerce, we had our employee meeting with the city manager, and then, of course, we attended the transportation and drainage code rodeos. So you heard about this earlier, but this, again, to verify, we were actually there at the dinner and did get recognized. These are photos from a dinner that was on Sunday night there in Austin to recognize Bastrop. Downtown Bastrop is a great neighborhood in the state of Texas, so we had the biggest turnout. I'll point that out from the other, other five cities that were recognized. So we had a phenomenal turnout. It was a great honor, and just enjoyed being there and learning about, or being recognized for the city of Bastrop, and then learning about some of the other cities also.
Mr. Jones, I want to point out that we, at that dinner, we had city council members, and we had three out of nine planning and zoning board members, which are all complete volunteers, and the full planning staff. So it was, really appreciate everybody putting time and effort into it.
Absolutely. Then the following day, we had the planning day at the Capitol. We were able to visit with some of our representatives, and were actually recognized on the floor of the State Senate by name and department and city, and so that was really a privilege. I don't, I don't know how often that'll come up in your professional career, but it was really something special. And again, we got to enjoy it with council and staff and some of our other elected officials there at the state Capitol. So it was just a really great time to be recognized for all the work that you all and then some of the planning that our department does. So it was just a really great day, or a couple of days. And that is all I have for you this evening. Any questions or comments?
Great job, Mr. Jones. Council, any other questions for Mr. Jones?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Okay, council, as promised, we, now that we have done 9A, we are now going to move to 12E. Consider, and that is in the middle of page four, consider action to approve the first reading of ordinance number 2019-10 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, enacting Chapter 1, Article 1.20, Sections 1.02, 0.001 through 1.20, 0.120, of the Bastrop Code of Ordinances, establishing construction and development standards and procedures for assertion, establishment, determination, and recognition. I'm reading the wrong one. All righty. 12E, consider action to approve Resolution Number R2019-39 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, responding to the application of CenterPoint Energy Resources Corporation, South Texas Division, to increase rates under the Gas Reliability Infrastructure Program, suspending the effective date of the rate application for 45 days, authorizing the city to continue to participate in a coalition of cities known as the Alliance of CenterPoint Municipalities, determining that the meeting at which the resolution was adopted complied with the Texas Open Meetings Act, making such other findings and provisions related to the subject and declaring an effective date. Madam Secretary.
Mayor and council, in response to the application of CenterPoint Energy Resource Corporation, the South Texas Division, and the application is to increase the rates under the Gas Reliability Infrastructure Program. The resolution is to suspend the effective date of this rate application for 45 days, and authorize the city to continue to participate in a coalition of cities known as the Alliance of CenterPoint Municipalities. On our, around March 28, CenterPoint filed for an increase in gas utility rates under the Gas Reliability Infrastructure Program, which is known as the GRIP, which if approved, results in an increase in the monthly customer charges. The city has a special responsibility to exercise due diligence with regards to rate increases of monopoly utilities who operate within its boundaries. It is necessary to suspend the effective date for the increase in rates for 45 days so that the city can assure itself that the data and calculations in CenterPoint's rate application are correctly done and are in conformity with Section 104.301 of the Gas Utility Regulatory Act. The effective date proposed by CenterPoint is May 27, 2019, but a suspension by the city will mean that the rate increase cannot go into effect prior to July 11, 2019. With the approval of this ordinance, the city would authorize this law firm of Herrera Law and Associates to act on the city's behalf in connection with CenterPoint's application to increase the rates. I'll be happy to accept any questions.
Ms. Franklin, we're doing this in conjunction with other cities?
Yes, sir.
And then do we know, do we know approximately how many cities are involved in that alliance?
I do not know how many. I can find that out for you and go back to you.
Mayor, Pro Tim, I'd be willing to guess just about all of the cities that are in CenterPoint's service district.
I like that guess.
Council, any other questions for Secretary Franklin?
Move to approve.
Second. I have a motion to approve from Mayor Pro Tim Nelson. I have a second from Councilmember Rogers. Is there any further discussion? Councilmember Ennis, did you have any discussion?
No, ma'am, I'm moving to second.
All right. With no further discussion, Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Resolution R2019-39, item 12E, is unanimously approved. All right, now can I go to 12A? Everybody cool with that? All right, we are going to 12A, which is at the top of page four. Consider action and approve Resolution Number R2019-37 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, making determinations regarding certain project-specific exceptions and/or exemptions as provided by Emergency Ordinance 2018-1, Section 8, and Emergency Ordinance 2018-2, Section 7. Ms. Bills? Council, you have before you the documents that Ms. Bills placed. We went into executive session and came back. Does anybody need a few of the information? Councilmember Ennis, are you all right with, or do you need a few minutes? You're good to go? All right, Ms. Bills, you are on.
So we have two items for consideration tonight. They're both waivers to, for, in the exemption categories. First is 1700 Main Street. This property is at the corner of Main and Cypress, which is a short street there. What they are planning to do is to put in a culvert with a concrete apron, and then using the alternative design standards of, with, through the moratorium, do a gravel driveway. So they'll do, be doing approximately 320 square feet of actual impervious cover, which will be in the right-of-way over a culvert, and they've provided some, the topographic grading plan for the, the grading of the ditch that shows that the drainage will come off the lot and then go down to the existing drainage culvert. So, and the engineers provided a letter that this will not have any adverse impact in the area.
Move to approve. A motion to approve from Councilmember Jones?
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Ennis. Is there any further discussion or questions of Ms. Bill? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peters?
Thank you, council. The motion passes unanimously. 1700 Main is approved. Ms. Bills?
This is 120 Akaila Lane in Titian Village. This is within the city limits of the city of Bastrop. And what the applicant is proposing to do, there's already an existing house there, and they want to just add on a couple rooms to the house, so approximately 485 square feet onto the existing structure. It'll increase the impervious cover on the lot by 3%, and this area is fairly pervious, so it's only a 0.09 cubic feet per second increase in drainage off that additional impervious cover and everything. There's already a house there, so it already drains towards the street, so.
Move to approve. I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Jones?
Second.
I have a second from Mayor Pro Tim Nelson. Is there any further discussion or questions? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peters?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Thank you, council. The motion passes unanimously. 120 Akaila Lane is approved. Excellent job as always, Ms. Bills. Thank you very much. All right, council, now that we're in a building Bastrop frame of mind, we're going to move to item 12D, the one I started to read, and now I have to read again. 12D, consider action to approve the first reading of ordinance 2019-10 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, enacting Chapter 1, Article 1.20, Sections 1.02, 0.001 through 1.20, 0.120, of the Bastrop Code of Ordinances, establishing construction and development standards and procedures for assertion, establishment, determination, and recognition of potential grandfather development status or vested rights claims, and providing for the following, finding of fact, enactment, repealer, severability, effective date, codification, proper notice and hearing, popular name, purpose, and scope, and move to include on the May 14 consent agenda for second reading, because it wouldn't be April 23, because that's today. Mr. Attorney? Mr. Attorney?
We failed to put your PowerPoint in the presentation, but it is in counsel's packet.
Thank you. That's fine. This was a subject of a previous council work session where we went through the power briefly. State law through the common law has an issue called vested rights. That is a form of grandfathering. There's another form of grandfathering for construction, building, development-related permits in the statute, chapter 245 of the Local Government Code, that basically says that the regulations that will govern a project for the life of the project's construction will be those that were in place the day that the first application was filed for the first permit. That has been the law in Texas for quite a while now. Up to this point, the city of Bastrop has not had any administrative rules, procedures, or criteria for recognizing those grandfathered development rights. So this ordinance, if adopted, will provide those rules and procedures, provide an orderly application process, and provide a process for property owners or developers to appeal if they don't initially get the decision they want from city staff. I think the timing of this ordinance is important because of all the building Bastrop efforts that we're doing, the new codes regarding Platts, construction, zoning, development, those sorts of things will come forward. And there will be some properties that want to be able to assert grandfathered status. This ordinance gives us a reasonable process for addressing those claims.
Councilmember Jones?
I think it's great that we're doing that. We actually have a process in place where there wasn't anything before. And this just shows to the council that there's real progress that we've made in kind of unraveling what we've got and getting real solutions. I'd really like to, I think that this is probably going to be part of this process. It's going to be part of the result that we get from this whole redoing of these codes and ordinances, and I really appreciate it.
You're welcome. I think you will, because right now, anyone that asserts a grandfathered status is addressed on an ad hoc, piecemeal basis. This ordinance will provide some consistency and uniformity in how Bastrop handles those requests.
Councilmember Ennis?
I know you're waiting for this. We've already discussed it. I have a real problem with if the committee does not provide a written request to the application within 15 business days after the application was filed, the application is automatically deemed to have been denied. That just doesn't seem like we're treating our constituents fairly. I would think that they need to have received a reply or if it's not, it's approved.
I agree that the applicant should receive a response from the city in a timely manner. The reason I drafted that language that way is so that they have a definitive answer. If we if the clock is ticking and we don't take action, then when the clock expires, they get their definitive answer. It's denied. And at that point, they have a right to appeal it or refile it or something like that.
But there's no onus on the city to reply within those 15 days.
That's correct. Earlier in the ordinance, there's a policy statement, which I hope you adopt. It's my recommendation. And that is that the policy is that there is a presumption. And the presumption is that project permits that come forward today comply with today's regulations. But if a property owner, builder, or developer thinks they have the benefit of being grandfathered, that's fine. They can come forward and plead their case, and we have a process for doing so, including appeals. But otherwise, the onus is on them to come in and comply with the new updated regulations. And that's the policy statement that I would recommend.
But if they if they meet every condition of their of their submittal, I don't understand why we cannot have an answer back to them in 15 days.
I agree that we should, but I'm not inclined to recommend that by default, because of an accident or some sort of inadvertent mistake, the city of Bastrop is by ordinance automatically approving projects under old regulations.
Councilmember, it is always our intent to provide good customer service. It is oftentimes a debate as to whether or not the application is complete. Without naming names today, we have had multiple conversations with an applicant that we have told in a string of emails that their application is not complete, and that's not the answer they want. So what this does is to the city attorney's appoint, you get a definitive answer after 15 days. It is denied. And in some instance, that helps us with folks that think their application is complete when it doesn't meet the spirit of the law. But in most cases, staff works very diligently to make that happen. I think this protects us in the thing that slips through the cracks and also for some that think they have met the intent when we know we haven't.
Well, as long as they're getting some kind of response from the city saying that their application is not complete and that's you can appeal it if you want. I'm just talking about the situations where they're sitting without an answer and all of a sudden their application is denied.
Councilmember Ennis, it's been my experience in my career that the easy ones get the answer right away. If you're if you're in the 15 days, it's because it's complicated. It's because there's a discussion about what's included, what's not included. And it's my opinion that the attorney drafted it this way because ultimately, the people that we're trying to protect is the rest of the community. And quite often, the only reason why someone wants to be grandfathered is because there is something in the new rules that they do not want to comply with. And that's why the building Bastrop discussions that we're having are so vitally important.
But that's not addressing the response within the 15 days. That's all I'm concerned about is the response.
Well, but I thought you said you wanted it to be automatically approved if they didn't get a response.
Well, that's an option to put, make sure they get a response. We have passed those kinds of ordinances in the past where it was automatically approved if the response was not received.
I don't think this, the council that I'm sitting on has never passed an ordinance that it's automatically approved.
I'm not talking about this council we're sitting on. I'm talking about councils in the past.
And I and the city attorney can correct me if I'm wrong, but I know in many cities, for one thing, one of the ones I'm used to is Platts. As soon as you would turn in a plat, they would be statutorily denied because they needed an answer. And that meant, we've told you no, and now we'll put you on an agenda later. So I'm more used to seeing them denied than seeing them automatically approved.
If you've gotten the answer, that's all I'm asking for, is that I think they get a formal denial or approval within those 15 days.
And what I can say is from staff, we hear you. But there are humans in charge of the process. What your city attorney is providing you is the failsafe that if something happens and they need an answer, it's denied. To say what the mayor said a different way, and I often say this, in some instances, your customer's not standing in front of you. The customer is the person that you're advocating in their absence. And from a grandfathering status, the newer codes, the newer regulations, we know will ensure that we don't have the detrimental development that we've seen, given some of our current regulations. Grandfathering in this instance, to the mayor's point, that it gets complicated, you have to have proof, you have to have records. And when you're a city that's 183 years old, it takes time to dig and to do that. So what I can pledge to you is we work every day to provide good customer service. But life happens, and if they need that answer in 15 days and we've missed it, it's denying. But all they have to do is just bring their paperwork back in and we would pick up where the time left off. So this doesn't become cumbersome. It's just meeting the intent of the law so we don't inadvertently approve something we will live to regret.
Mayor Pro Tem Nelson?
Question, but the denial initiates the appeal process immediately, does it not? There's another 15 days that it's heard before the, I think, city manager, if I read it correctly, is the first line of appeal?
Correct. Whether it's denied by the Development Review Committee or whether it's denied by the city manager, they have the opportunity to file a written appeal to a higher authority. Ultimately, it'll come to this body. And so if the initial answer is denied because of no action, they still have remedies within the city of Bastrop structure to handle that.
Counsel, any other questions or comments from the city attorney?
I have a question for the attorney.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Mr. Mahorkas, if I understand correctly, if somebody does not make substantive changes on existing property owners that make substantive changes in their, then there is the grandfathering takes takes effect. It's only when they make substantive changes into their property that may impact the flooding issue or the drainage issue that grandfathering may not be applicable?
Correct. The grandfathering attaches not just to a piece of property, it attaches to the project. So whatever they were proposing when they came in and filed that first permit, that's what arguably locks in the laws that apply to that project. If they go and change the project to where it's, as you're saying, substantially different, they may have lost their grandfathering at that point. That's one reason this ordinance requires that they provide provide some of the data upfront that the city manager mentioned may not be on record, depending on how far back they're going. They need to come in and document which rules apply to them and why. And this gives a process and procedures for doing so.
Councilmember Jones? May I make a motion? Sure. To approve. I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Jones?
Second.
I have a second from Mayor Pro Tem Nelson. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
I'm going to vote for this and say yes, because we do have an appeal process, but I still have concerns about it.
All right, counsel, sticking with our building Bastrop mode, we are moving to the first of the next page on page 512H. Consider action to approve on first reading ordinance number 2019-17 of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas enacting a new chapter, chapter 16, storm water drainage of the Bastrop Code of Ordinances establishing storm water drainage requirements in order to minimize flood risks, stabilize and decrease steam bank, stream bank, sorry, and channel erosion, and facilitate comprehensive watershed-based planning and repealing. Emergency ordinance 2018-2, amendment to the emergency ordinance 2018-2-A, and article 5.30 alleys, article 5.90 drainage and storm sewers, section 6.80.3 roadside drainage dishes, article 6.100 rural subdivision drainage requirements, and article 7.50 drainage from chapter 10 subdivisions of the Bastrop Code of Ordinances and establishing an effective date. Mr. Joe?
All right. Thank you, Mayor and counsel. ordinance that we've been working on for quite a while. One of the main things I want to point out is, again, at your direction, drainage is going to be talked about more often and upfront. We've had multiple discussions. We've had the rodeos. We've had lots of input from area engineers. There is one thing that I'd like to change and make an adjustment on. And that is also, we caught this as the packet went out afterwards on that Thursday. We also need to repeal section 1.40. It would have to include repealing section 1.40 of chapter 10 as well, which is the drainage design criteria.
When you consider this ordinance at the second reading, we will include that in the heading?
Yes, and I've already put it in the packet as a correction for the next meeting. But I wanted to make sure you got a copy and you knew what we were going over tonight before you voted on it. So I have Mr. Schuback here as well. Do you have any questions for us? I think we have beat this thing to death, but I'm certainly going to talk about it.
Why don't you cover very, why don't you cover very quickly the incorporation of the changes and what will and will not come to counsel? Because this is a pretty significant change over our current process.
This is a this is a significant change. Like I said, the main one is that it's brought up and it's brought often. We have a design manual that points each of these sections that are being repealed to the design manual where they're addressed. At the direction of the council at the last meeting, remove the water quality section. Those have been changed. And what we have in here now is, if you're looking for the process as it goes?
Yes.
The smaller developments like we were talking about previously would not be impacted, would not be something you would bring for for an exemption, kind of the direction we were headed tonight. What you saw tonight would not have come before you for counsel. That was something we would have taken care of with the site visit. But a larger a larger development, you would have seen us come in and ask you for exemption process if it's denied by us.
Do you have your presentation from last time?
I do not. I did not put a presentation in for this.
Okay, because I need you to talk about what the impervious cover limits are that now are going to be addressed by staff that are not coming here and the process that will be handled on a staff level because of the adoption of this.
So what you'll see different in here is the disturbance, land disturbance of the, remember, we talked about the 10,000 square feet and the 5,000 square feet. That is different. And then the impervious cover limits are not in this ordinance. They will be in the manual as far as 60% coverage in the, but it'll be part of the process. When you have a 5% change in coverage, you will not have to come before counsel as long as you don't exceed the 60% of impervious cover for a small residential lot. Does that make any sense?
So, Mr. Joe, what we're looking at tonight is adopting the ordinance, which is inclusive of the manual, correct?
That's correct. The manual, the ordinance points you to the manual.
For clarity, Councilmember Rogers, what he passed out was just the ordinance?
Just the ordinance. The manual has not changed.
The manual was in the, it was in the packet.
It's in the packet, sorry. Yeah, the section 1.40 was inadvertently left out of.
For clarity's sake, under section four, it says, "In order to achieve the purposes above, it is the city's intent to require that new land development strongly consider low-impact development and green infrastructure approaches." That is not requiring them to implement them. It's requiring them to consider them.
That's correct.
So if they decide not to implement them?
You do not have to.
Okay.
You do not have to.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tem Nelson?
And the reason my question is, is I was going through the manual. As a layman, and certainly I can't argue with the formulated processes that are in there, I just I just don't know enough. But as a layman, it was a tough, tough read. Was the package put together by staff to be reviewed by our consultant? Was it put together by our consultant to be reviewed by our staff?
Yes, it was together by our consultant. Staff reviewed it. We've all collaborated on changes, and we went back and forth. As far as the manual itself, yes. And we've taken input from multiple engineer. We haven't had any issues since we removed the water quality section.
And Mayor and counsel, when you read the introduction to the technical manual, it assumes that you have some basis, so it is not written for your typical layman. It is intended to be a drainage manual to guide the engineering calculations for the design of appropriate drainage infrastructure.
Yes.
Who else did you get comments from?
We've got comments from Aff, and we've got comments from Doug Brummel with CBD. We haven't heard back from Brendan. Of course, Mark has made comments.
And I fully appreciate that just because they commented doesn't mean that you're going to do exactly what they commented.
Correct.
But do you feel like you've addressed all of this? Have you have you provided? Here's really what I'm asking. I'll get around to it. I believe you had a document at the design rodeo that you handed to people to give you comments on.
That's correct.
I believe that what I got at the rodeo and what you put in the packet is the same thing. Is that, am I completely wrong?
It is. It has very few changes. You're absolutely correct.
So you got comments from three sets of engineers. Can you point what changes you made based on their comments?
The basic changes in here is the 10,000 and 5,000 square feet for the smaller, and we took out all the water quality. That is a change. That is what we were asked to do. We removed the water quality and then for the smaller land services.
Yeah, but counsel asked you to, you know, that was made at counsel.
Right.
I'm just, I know that there were some comments that some of the tables aren't numbered, some of the tables don't source their, don't make a reference to the source data, that kind of stuff. Do you just not plan on addressing those or you're going to address them? Because I know we can change things.
Did we get those?
I have not seen that comment. I, I have not seen that comment. I, I, I will certainly go back and look and see. We will certainly fix any kind of scripener error that's up.
Because there's, there's.
If the concern is just typos and scripeners, yes, we will fix that. If it's, if it's a, the process in which you calculate the drainage, this is what, this is what we're going, yeah, this is what we're proposing. If we want to do something lesser, that's certainly something we can talk about, but I wouldn't recommend it.
Well, here's an example. On page 11, it's referred to as light imprint development, and the definitions is low-impact development, and they're both referred to as LID. So are we going to do some, are we going to be consistent in the manual?
Yes, we can do that.
Okay. And then I also have a question because, and one spot, and I had made the comment that I don't. Mayor, it'd be helpful if you could just send me a copy of yours, and I'd be happy to. There's only a couple, but there, I understand, but there's, there was a discussion of, are we going to allow CMP pipe? And in the manual, you have, no, we're not going to allow CMP pipe. But then there's, in the next, in the following section, there's a requirement of what the velocity of the water should be in a CMP pipe.
Right.
And, and I. So it was my understanding that CMP pipe would not be used in the public right-of-way, but it would be allowed on private property?
That's correct.
Is that distinction made in the technical manual?
That is an excellent question for our consulting.
I don't believe it is.
I don't think it is.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it is in there now, but it certainly can be added.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, and, and I'm, and one of the suggestions from HAF and Associates said, allow the, the culvert for, you know, on a, on a single-family residence. And, and you and I both know, if the culvert's long enough, you're not going to have problems with it collapsing. It's, it's a matter of specking it correctly and lengthen installation. Okay, so my, and I don't, I've got a couple of them, and I don't really want to go through all of them, but I'm a little bit concerned that, are you saying you have seen all of HAF's comments, or you have not?
We, we have seen, we have not incorporated all the comments because the turnaround on this was insane to get it in here within two weeks.
And that's exactly why I was asking, because it was like, you had a document, you got comments, and boom, you were having to put it in the packet.
Yes.
So I'm, I'm completely. It is not finally adopted until the second reading.
And in this ordinance.
There are a couple of things that the city attorney is checking, and so when we bring it back to you for the second reading, any change, we will note.
And, and what this allows to do is the city engineer can, can make changes to design manuals needed for those type of things like that.
And that was my other thing I was going to ask. Is there, is there some that really, because I'm pretty sure I'm the only one really interested in this. There may be a few of them. I'm, I'm actually interested, too. With the, with some of the slopes, you know, there were some suggestions of doing a four-to-one on the roadside and a three-to-one on the backside, and that seems like a reasonable suggestion. So some of those to talk about. But specifically, a call that I got today, and Mark may want to speak to this, but on page 46, the manholes for the storm sewer manholes are, are required to be provided at all grade changes. And given some of our topography around here, I'm not sure that's really what we want to do. It's, we're not Houston and super flat. There, and if it's an 18-inch pipe, and, you know, you could have a minor, minor change in the, from, on the slope, and a lot of, you know, I don't know, are you completely opposed to field joints, I guess is what I'm asking?
It's, it's typically not done, but what we can do is we can put some qualifying language in there that would maybe allow it on a case-by-case basis depending on physical constraints or something to that effect.
And they do some precast fittings?
Sure, you can do precast bands, special fittings.
And is that in here, and I missed it?
No.
That's our, that's our current standard. You are required to have a manhole or a precast bidding. But when you change in direction, and it's significant, it has to.
Yeah, significant direction I don't have any problems with, but this is talking about all grade breaks requiring a manhole. And I just, that, I don't think you really want to do that.
And it's, and you're referencing when it's steep enough that the pipe would be separated, correct? Or is that the?
In some of the topography, absolute, there's points here, because we all know you're not going to bend the pipe, you're going to have a manhole, and you're going to be, you're going to have different elevations coming into that. I just, I would like you guys to, to relook at that so that we're not ending up getting something that you guys really don't want to maintain. And also, if we could clarify that precast is, is allowed, or, you know, I don't know if you have a, a degree, if it's 45 degrees or less, or if there's a point that you want to have precast. But if we could give a little, a little better feel on that, I think that might be helpful. And to the city manager's point, I will, I think we can approve the overall portion of it, I think is excellent, particularly as the city manager was pointing out, a lot of the 0.1 CFS, and somebody has to wait for a council meeting, and, you know, that, that is, that's one of the biggest things that we're doing in this, is taking the lessons that we learned from when we enacted the, the moratorium and the emergency drainage ordinance. We've learned a lot of things, and we have incorporated that to make sure that we're protecting our current citizens and our future citizens. And I think this is an excellent way to do that and to get the decision back where it belongs, at staff and with our city engineer. But I just, I don't want to be in such a rush to do that part that's great, that we end up adopting something that really ends up being a pain and wasn't exactly what we, what we wanted. So if we can do some cleanup between now and the next one, because it's, and I was like, there's no way he got it turned around that fast with, with all the comments.
This truly should, the manual should truly be a living document, that as we learn and as the numbers change, it can be incorporated every year and reviewed along with all our other development manuals.
Yes, agreed. There, there was some references to some software programs that they think aren't used anymore and some other stuff. So I've, it's, I've been out of the business too long to know. But I just want, I know that we want the document that we adopt to be as accurate as it can possibly be. Even knowing that it's living, we want to start in a good spot. Mayor Protem Nelson?
And, and, and I, again, I want to reiterate that, that I wasn't reading this as a, as an expert on anything. But as a layman, and, and matter of fact, I was looking at the background, it said guidance, and then it also said to provide information relative to a permitting process. And I think it needs to be understood, not only by those, in all deference to, to the mayor, who understands this process. It should be a somewhat of an easy read to, to make a determination of what one needs to do. The, the fact that the tables aren't numbered, the fact that they're not sighted, really created a real problem for me because how, how does a citizen know that those weren't just made-up numbers? Well, we know they weren't made up, but we still should cite those. And I would like to be able to read a document we're putting out to our citizens that have some modicum of, of, of feel for what it, what it, what it means and what it entails if I was going to, to put a development together. And, and I commend you on what's been put together so far, but I just think there's some, some cleanup that needs to be done. It is a living document, but at least we need to give it a, a good breath of life for its first walk out of the, out of the box, so.
The, the other thing I would suggest, and this is what we typically do with design manuals, is that when you do make changes, to document them, to make sure that you, in the front, you have a page that says, you know, on this date, this, this was changed, and in that way, it's, it's sort of properly documented. It's just a, it's a good practice.
It's a whole lot better than find, find the needle in the haystack.
Right.
Yeah. No, I, I think that's an excellent idea. And may, and if you guys want to add a page for that, knowing that there's going to be some revisions or whatever.
We could do that.
We've, we're all living with stuff that wasn't well documented and wasn't put in the right place. Let's make it as easy as we can for the folks in the future. Excellent suggestion. Council, any further discussion or questions? I would move, knowing that the document is going to have a little bit of changes between now and then, I would, I would expect it to not be on the consent agenda. I would, I would think.
I, I agree.
Yeah, okay. All righty.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve with the caveat that the, some of these issues, these cleanup issues need to be addressed prior to us having the second reading and it not be placed on the consent agenda.
I have a motion from Mayor Protem Nelson.
I have a second, and would ask you to consider just adding to your motion that when it is re-presented to us, that we, that those changes that have been made are noted. Honestly, that'd be helpful, like if we can do something in red, you know?
We can do that.
And that'll help us with, because we've visited with those. And it will come with a PowerPoint presentation the next time.
It certainly will. We will point out each section and walk through it.
The amendment to the, the motion is accepted.
All right, we had a friendly amendment, and it was accepted. So I have a motion from Mayor Protem Nelson, and a second from Councilmember Jones. Is there any further discussion or comments? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
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 Mayor and council, before we leave this, are there any substantive changes that you're concerned about that would require Mr. Schumac to, Schubach to attend the next meeting? He is flying in to attend these, and I don't hear anything tonight that would suggest it would be a good use of his time or our money to fly him in the next time. I don't think it's necessary, and I will make a point of sharing the questions with Trey, and if he needs to call Mark, we can work that out over the phone. Excellent, thank you. And, and then if there are a couple of items, if, maybe if Mark's given us a response, we'll just include that in the PowerPoint to, to be, you know. I, I want to honestly, of all the engineering firms, and it's not surprising, HAF and Associates is an excellent firm. We've done a lot of business with them. They've turned in questions. CBD does a lot of business in there. So we want to take it into account, and if we're not going to do what they're suggesting or requesting, I'd rather just address that from the head-on and just be that, you know, at the end of the day, we get to vote, and this is what it is, and, and, but we all know the consequences, and we're all on the same page. Is that agreeable, Mark?
Yes.
Great. All right.
Thank you.
I, I guess I just, I just wanted to make one comment. It feels kind of from up here to sit and vote on something when I don't think that you feel very confident on what you're trying to tell me. So I just want you, it was kind of, it gives me a she-wash, well, yeah, that one, this one, and I'm with, you know, Councilmember.
It'll be tight when it comes back, Mayor.
Certainly will.
It, it, I don't in any way want to minimize the amount of work that I know that's been involved in it, and getting prepared for the rodeos and, and the packet when it's due and all. I was very respectful of that, but it's a big deal. We need to all be on the same page.
I'd like to stress to the folks that are watching that we've been working on this a long time.
Yeah, it's been three or four meetings. All righty, that council's had it. They've been working on it longer than that. All right, and in the last, okay, I, thank you, Mark, appreciate it. It passed unanimously. Ordinate, first reading of ordinance 2019-17 is approved. The second reading will be on May 14th, and it will be on our individual consideration items. On finishing up our building Bastrop, actions that we need to take tonight, we're at 12L, which is the very last item on page five. Consider action to approve the first reading of ordinance 2019-16 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, repealing emergency ordinance 2018-1, temporary moratorium as extended, and enacting procedural rules and criteria for enhanced permit review, consistent with building Bastrop policy directives, including heightened evaluation of certain permit applications for building, construction, and development projects, and move to include on the May 14th, 2019, consent agenda for a second reading. Attorney Borkas.
Thank you, Mayor Schrader. Counsel, before you is a draft ordinance that does two things essentially. The first is that it repeals the temporary moratorium that you adopted back in August to address both the drainage issues in our regulations and our infrastructure, and to look at our overall development patterns and growth so as to better steer the community in ways that are fiscally sustainable, geographically sensitive, and authentically Bastrop. It is staff's recommendation to repeal the, the temporary moratorium at this point. We think it has served its purpose, and we've made a lot of progress since you first adopted it in August. The other point to make about the temporary moratorium, as was pointed out in our Planning and Development Services Director, Matt Jones's presentation earlier, the temporary moratorium did not actually serve as a halt on all development within the city of Bastrop. Instead, the city has approved about the same number of construction, building, and development permits during the moratorium that it approved the previous year during the same time period. So what actually occurred during the temporary moratorium was not a prohibition or ban on all development. Instead, what occurred was what I would call a heightened level of review. All of the permit applications that we received since August went through a type of scrutiny that was very close with staff. It involved pre-permit application meetings. It involved site visits, and it involved evaluating those permits and plans in terms of how they're going to affect their downstream neighbors and those sorts of things, including connectivity, walkability, and such. And so at this point, we think the temporary moratorium is not necessary. Instead, we're recommending an enhanced permit review process. And that's the second part of what this ordinance does. This basically codifies into our code of ordinances the exact same permit review methodology that your staff has been using since August. And with that, you have staff's recommendation. Included in here are some legislative findings of fact that document why you did the moratorium in the first place and what has been done since then. And it also lays out the work still to be done. As you know, we're working aggressively and consistently with your city planning staff, engineering staff, public work staff, the consultants at Simple City Design, and elsewhere to craft the new codes that will go into effect. We imagine those are going to come forward to you this summer for adoption in the fall, at which point this ordinance would go away toward the end of the year. It's set to expire at your first meeting in December if it's not repealed sooner than that, because the new ordinances are put in place sooner than that. But because we still have work to do, including working on the master transportation plan, the outdoor lighting ordinances, looking at our streets infrastructure, the plans to improve our drainage infrastructure, and exploring creation of a drainage utility, we still need some more time. So while we're not asking or proposing that you halt any development, instead, we're asking that you consider these temporary permit procedures to help us keep the high level of development going through that's been going through since August. I'm available for any questions if you have any.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Councilmember Ennis?
And as I understand it, sir, the, the enhanced permit process will be a portion of our new development code?
Correct. What we've seen with these pre-application visits, the pre-application consultations, and this level of review, it seems that we've achieved a win-win. The property owners, developers, builders are getting more input from city staff earlier on in the process. City staff is looking at the sites and the plans more closely to spot problems before the project gets too far down the road. This sort of procedure seems to be working so well, it only makes sense to make that part of our regular permit process when the new rules come. So while this is worded as a temporary interim measure, you can anticipate that it'll be in the final codes that are adopted later in the year.
So in, in some ways, it's a milestone?
Absolutely.
In our whole process.
I think we've learned a lot since August, and I think the process staff has used to review these permits truly has been a win-win both for the property owner and for the city. You and the city staff have approved a lot of permits during that time period, but I think it's a better quality development. So I think we're on to something.
That's great.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
And I really appreciate this. This is consistent with our statement that, that we have the right to learn, and we've learned a lot, and this appears to be a bridge to something that's going to be longer lasting when we get through with our 3B projects or B3 projects. Thank you. And I, I particularly like that we've found it's going to make it easier on our citizens on fence permits, minor plats, and accessory structures by giving it to staff rather than bringing it for council. And that, that's a, that's a lesson learned, and it's going to speed up the process. So that, this, this is excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome, Mayor Protem Nelson. But he does point out another component of this ordinance. Having gone through a number of city council meetings where you've been asked to approve exceptions or recognize exemptions, city staff has helped me zero in on some thresholds below which city staff can approve these projects going forward, which means fewer projects have to wait to go forward to city council in the future. Hopefully, that streamline makes the meetings a little bit easier for you and allows less wait time for your citizens.
And they are still, they still have a, an appeal process if they don't happen to concur with staff's decision?
Correct, Mayor. If the property owner, the applicant, doesn't feel they need to go through these go through these enhanced permit review procedures, they can ask for an exemption through that, and city staff will make the first determination. If it's denied, then they can appeal that to the city manager. If it's again denied, they have a right to appeal to you, the city council, and you're the final authority on that.
Excellent. Councilmember Jones?
So, the thing that's kind of really nice about this is not only have we figured out a process that, I think that what, I mean, I'm saying right now that we're definitely going to be, as a council, we want to move forward with this as part of the new ordinance, is that, in that process, but we've also heard the citizens, and we've eliminated some of the requirements that are sort of, were sort of onerous, if that's the right word, and we're making it just a staff decision for that to be made. And I'm specifically talking about maybe certain-sized storage buildings and fences, replacing fences and so forth. So, I mean, we've been responsive. We've found a process, and we've been responsive. So, I think this has shown real progress for us, and it's a good job.
Good, thank you. Through the process we've gone through, the moratorium, staff has figured out where the sticking points are on some of those smaller projects, and figured out what projects are unlikely to have an effect on neighbors or the cumulative flooding of a certain neighborhood. This ordinance gives staff to go ahead and greenlight those without making folks come to council, which means it's only those more complicated, difficult projects that will be coming to you.
And City Attorney, although we are trying to streamline things and expedite things, we're also trying to make sure we continue to protect all the drainage, and so, there should be an expectation by the community that this does not mean you do not need a permit for a fence, correct?
Correct. Because we've learned that there can be something that someone calls a fence that absolutely changes the way property drains off of that project. And so, depending on how it's constructed, is it constructed in a drainage easement, those sorts of things need to be verified first, because we've learned that the cumulative effects of lots of ill-planned, small projects can have a pretty big impact on a community.
And we can take advantage of the fact that our staff is certainly well-capable of identifying those issues and resolving them with the property owner, and it doesn't need to come to council.
Correct.
One, if you, I would like to offer one friendly amendment on Section 3, where you have duration. You have that this ordinance will, that it'll be implemented by, this ordinance shall be through, I believe it's December 10th of 2019, or until the repeal of this ordinance. I would like council to consider that this be until the adoption of the Building Bastrop Code, because I think, as Mayor Protem Nelson pointed out, it is a bridge from where we are now to where we know we are committed to going to and getting approved, and so, certainly upon the approval of the Building Bastrop Code, our intention, we would not need this anymore, if I'm understanding this correctly. Is that true?
So, I think that is true. I think we could add that language, if you wish, to the draft that comes back to you on May 14th. I recommend we keep December 10th unless repealed earlier because of adoption of the Building Bastrop Codes.
Absolutely. Counsel, is that a friendly enough amendment for everyone? Okay. All right. Any other questions for Mr. Porcas?
Move to approve.
A second. I have a motion to approve from Mayor Protem Nelson, a second from Councilmember Jones, and a good job, thank you very much, from the entire council. Is there any further comments? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. The first reading of the ordinance 2019-16 is approved. While you are on page five, the only item that we have left is 12I, and the city manager has told me that that item has been pulled.
Do we have a reason why? I thought this was a text note.
The contract is not finalized for your consideration this evening. We put this in in hopes that that would happen, and it has not, so it will be on your May 14th with the contract that you get to approve before you approve it.
All right, so 12I is pulled, which means we're done with page five. Yay! All right, I'm going backwards. We have 12B and C, and we have 12G left, and then we've got some presentations. City Manager, do you have a preference?
I can make 12B and C very short, and we'll do it as one item. We have visited on-
I think I need to read them.
Okay.
So, we will be taking 12B and 12C together. Consider action to approve Resolution Number R 2019-33 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, adopting a standardized wholesale water agreement attached in Exhibit A, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Item 12C, consider action to approve Resolution Number R 2019-32 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, adopting a standardized wholesale wastewater agreement attached in Exhibit A, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Ms. Umble?
Mayor and council, we have reviewed the draft agreements on several occasions, and essentially what this action tonight does is that you acknowledge that these are going to be the standardized templates from which staff is authorized then to negotiate with wholesale customers. The final execution of that contract will require your action, but this at least provides the, if you will, the rules of engagement so that we can sit down with some of the clients that we have an interest in doing business and negotiate standards that make sense so that we can bring that contract back to you in the near future for approval.
So, it's, for lack of a better term, a master template that's been vetted by the attorney, and then each and every agreement, because it's my understanding that some developments may want only wastewater, may want only what, there's every kind of combination out there, and on a case-by-case basis, for a project-specific contract, it will have to come back to council.
That is correct, and so, what will happen is, is that 90% of the contracts will be standardized among the customers. 10% will be based on their needs, the points of connection for master meters and so forth. So, again, we are standardizing the relationship for all of our wholesale customers going forward.
And City Attorney, it's my understanding your office has spent considerable time and effort on this, and you think these are the best two documents you've ever written. Is that correct?
I'm very proud to say that I had nothing to do with them at all, but the lawyer in my office who used to work for TCEQ helped with it greatly, and she's confident.
Okay, so you guys are confident with it as well?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Jones?
May I make a motion?
Sure.
To approve as presented.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Jones.
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Ennis. The motion would be for both 2019-32 and 2019-33. Is there any further discussion or comments? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, we're about to do the Tracy Waldron Show. We're going to move to item 12G, and then, I don't think that one will take very long. We're getting by about nine, a few minutes after nine, we'll take, we'll take another quick break, and Colin, so you'll know, we'll be catching, we'll be going back to presentations, and we'll do the staff reports that Ms. Waldron has, 9B and 9C, so she can, we can get, she can have an opportunity to get done with all her stuff at once. But right now, we are on the bottom of page 12, bottom of page four. Item 12G, consider action to approve the first reading of ordinance Number 2019-14 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, amending Chapter 11 Taxation, Section 11.04 Hotel Occupancy Tax, attached as Exhibit A in accordance with Chapter 351 of the Texas Tax Code, providing for findings of fact, enactment, repealer, severability, effective date, proper notice and meeting, and move to include on the May 14th, 2019, consent agenda for a second reading. Ms. Waldron?
Good evening, council. City Manager. As you'll recall, we did a presentation at the last meeting, and we had a representative from the Lodging Association come out and kind of go over some of these changes. These are just due to the changes in the Tax Code, Chapter 351, and so, just to highlight some of those changes that are represented in this ordinance, we are including some new language defining what a hotel is, and one of the main ones that we're trying to update for is the short-term rentals, because this is fairly new, specific to what is not a hotel, clarifying exemptions, just trying to match the ordinance with the Tax Code, and also mirroring the state comptroller's rules on when the reports are due and when payments are made, and also, there's a whole section added on when a hotel is purchased.
Thank you, Ms. Waldron. And I'm not sure if this is the city ma, I think it's the city manager question. Just for clarity, the fact that we are defining short-term rentals, which a lot of people call the STRs, which is the Airbnb and that type of thing, this means if someone has an STR, they are under this, they are obligated to pay the hotel occupancy tax. This does not discuss where STRs are allowed throughout the city. That is a different question.
Yes, STRs and where they're allowed is a zoning question. This is only if you are one. Whether you're legal or not, you owe us money, and we want your money.
And we have every intention of auditing that, because it is unfair to the folks who are playing by the rules if there are a group of folks who are not playing by the rules.
Yes, and so, one of the things that Tracy will be bringing back in the summer is we've identified a firm that will be handling that for us, and will be auditing all of the hotel occupancy tax sources of revenue that we get, because as was explained at the last council meeting, that is something that does not come through the comptroller's office. It comes to us, and so, we will just implement the consistent policy that we have fallen, followed to this date, and that is trust but verify, and we will be doing that with the hotel occupancy tax as well.
So, may I just ask-
Absolutely. Councilmember Jones?
Quick question. So, you know, we haven't really talked about where we allow short-term rentals.
And that's not on this, we can't talk about it now, because that's not what this item is posted for.
I know, but we mentioned it, and we said that it doesn't cover that, and I'm just going to ask that that's something that we probably just bring up soon, so that it's something that we can-
It'll be a part of our next discussion with Building Bastrop.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Waldron?
Some of the other changes in there just bring us in compliance with the Tax Code.
That's right, yeah.
I mean, it's at least four legislative sessions, we know that things have changed since then, so, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Move to approve, and place this on the consent agenda for the next meeting.
Second.
I have a motion from Mayor Protem Nelson, and a second from Councilmember Ennis. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes. Thank you, counsel. The motion passes unanimously. 2019-14 is approved. Okay, Mr. Lewis, I haven't forgot you. We really are going to go to you next. We are, the next item that we're going to talk about is 8C. It's 5 till 9. We are going to take a very short break, because it may, Mr. Lewis sometimes, his, well, she asked me, she has to stay, and they don't, so I'm doing what, I'm doing what the city manager asked me to do. All right, so, it is 8:59, and we are adjourned for a very short recess.[1405.01]
Okay, it is 9:04, and we are back in session. And Colin, I'm going to item 8C. Discuss building basdrop codes with Matt Lewis. Mr. Lewis?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Manager. My name is Matt Lewis with Simple City Design, and we are working on the building basdrop codes with you all. Tonight, we're going to go over a few key items, and we'll be discussing signage and architecture. And once this gets queued up, we'll begin. Oh, oh, here we go. All right, there we go. And the reason that we link these two together is very, oh, yes, ma'am, is very clear, because if you don't have a good sign ordinance, there's no purpose in regulating architecture, because your architecture is determined by your sign types. The signage just lines your roadways. And so the intent is to establish signs and architectural standards where they work in harmony together, so that the built environment and the signs work in coordination to highlight the architecture and highlight the fact that you're going on a visual, it's a visual informant, if you will. So the intent of regulating signs is that, that are visible along public frontages is to ensure the proper construction, that the dimensional standards are appropriately sized, that the number of signs are appropriately done, that the illumination is appropriately in context with the character that you're trying to, to inform. Furthermore, it's to--
Can I add a, just a minute? It just dawned on me. We probably ought to provide a little context about this. The sign ordinance is something that we asked Matt and his team to look at, because right now, I think we have something like 56 choices for the sign code. And it is, it is cumbersome, it is in conflict. Jennifer has had several occasions to bring sign, sign issues to you, and has taken us on a very convoluted process as to why it's complicated. So it is important for us to appreciate that what Matt and his team tonight are doing is simplifying that process substantially, so we don't have 56 options. We've got smart choices that are appropriately allocated based on the place types that you've done. And I think that introduction is important for people to understand. If we're not careful, we could have this.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for the preface. So as, as I was stating, a sign is a visual informant. It tells you where you're going, how you're going to get there. There are directional signs. There's all different types of signage. And so what we're trying to do is make sure that the types of signage are being built in the appropriate manner, that they don't create harm to public safety, so that they're not blinking and flashing at motorists. This is, creates a safety hazard. Furthermore, to articulate where public facilities would be located, hospitals, parks, their wayfinding and directional types of signs. And signs tell you how to perceive things. So sometimes if you're in a car, the sign's going to be larger than if you're on foot, because you're traveling 70 miles an hour. So the dimensional standards of signs directly correlate back to the built environment that we're talking about. And so the reason that I say this is because the building block, the building basdrop block code is going to be building walkable places, small blocks with a variety of different building types. And so I'm going to start with the signs that are of a more walkable context, and then build back out into the areas where they're more auto-centric, auto-centric places, and to establish how those transition areas occur as incremental development takes place. For example, a band sign that's located on a downtown building would be highly inappropriate on a building along 71. You wouldn't be able to read it. It's illegible. It's, it's not communicating a message. It's ineffective. And therefore, when you have buildings that are set back further, that have parking lots in front of them, or not built to the same characteristics as a downtown area, or as the area that you're coding in your new development codes, then the transition of signage is really critical. And so we're being very mindful of, as we go through this. The first type of sign is an address sign. They're required, and they're allowed in every single place type. They're, it's an address sign. The next sign type is an awning sign. And so awning signs are limited to 70% of the valance. The valance is the fabric material going over, and generally, you'll have logos, phone numbers, those types of things on the valance signs, and business name, those types of things, street address. And those are informational signs for pedestrians, as well as vehicular traffic. So it's a multiple type of informing people that are going through. The next type of sign you have is a blade sign. It projects from the front of the building, and generally, you'll allow these for the businesses on the first story, and the blade sign should be allowed to encroach into the right-of-ways about four feet or so. And generally, you'll want them above eight feet above the sidewalk grade. And so there's just general standards we're building in to make sure that these communicate. These are located in place type four and five, because you won't have commercial in place type three, two, or one. So you'll start to notice that these place types correlate directly with the sign types, because the built environment that they're creating emulate these sign types and how they'll be integrated. Marquee signs are located in place type five. They will also function as what are called message board signs. And so message board signs would be considered marquees. They can jut out about 10 feet over the clearance. They can come over the entire sidewalk section. And so it's an illumination that would inform someone walking down the street, almost the entire street length of that block, so that there's something that they're arriving at. So marquee signs are coming up. Now you have nameplate signs. These are the ones that are, go above doors. And they're located in P3, 4, and 5. Generally, they're smaller signs, no more than three square feet, and maybe located within 10 feet of the entrance, if you will. It's just to let you know what tenant is inside of the building. They're tenant signs, if you will.
Matt, would it be a problem if there was marquee next to marquee, next to marquee, next to marquee?
It's a great question. And I would, I would reverse that back to the council. Would that be an issue? Would you like marquees to be located on corners? Would you like them to be separated by three building types? Generally, you won't see that unless you have three end-users next to each other that, that would create that. So it's something to be mindful of, and--
Under what conditions would I want a marquee sign?
Generally, if you were a venue that could be a music venue, or a theater venue, something that has live plays, anytime you're trying to, you're going to have a changeable message. There's a, generally, when you'd see people using marquee signs. They're not pretty, they're not very predominant into the general business type, other than those types of businesses. And so--
But proximity would seem to lose, they would seem to lose their effectiveness because of the proximity to each other, would they not?
Right. Generally, they would, because they'd all be jutting out, and they'd be on the same visual plane because of the elevations. And they say, generally, wouldn't be staggered. So that's correct. You would generally see one on one side and one on the other, unless you're coming down this street on the opposite side of the street.
So, Mr. Planner, since we're not regulating uses, what is the answer to the mayor's question?
Let's see what happens. I, I don't know if there's an appropriate answer. I think that it should be reviewed. If you start to get several marquees, and this becomes an issue, then at that point, you may want to--
Yeah, that's a problem, because I don't want to address it once it's become an issue.
Sure, I understand. Yeah.
So, what, it's, Councilmember Rogers?
Well, I had a question. You had mentioned the marquee has to stick out so far. Is it, are you considering a marquee anything that you change the letters on, or just the ones that are like above, like a theater?
Right.
But what if I had a regular sign that I was able to change out my message? Is that considered a marquee or not?
No, ma'am. We, there's changeable message signs, and then there's display windows. So--
Okay.
There's display window cases like this. There's, there's alternative signs that would be allowed for that type of--
Well, onto the mayor's point, I think we should do a percentage of a specific area or, you know, the--
I, the word tacky comes to mind, if I think of marquee after marquee after marquee.
We're taking notes, and so what we'll do is--
And it would seem like if we don't have a reason why you can't do it, then people are going to do it, and however we're going to restrict it needs to be somehow fair, and however that's defined. Councilmember Ennis, did you want to make a comment?
I would say that you'd need to have some kind of separation, basic separation. If you're going to allow marquee, 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 how much separation is there between?
So I've made a note, and what we'll come back to you with is how can we regulate them so they function properly?
Yes, ma'am.
And I will caution you that we are not in the business to regulate tacky or ugly.
Right.
We have to make sure that whatever we do, we understand the why, so that we can make sure that they always function appropriately.
Yes, ma'am.
And if we do that, then we don't end up with unintended consequences, which is your point.
Right.
So I have that noted.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, and it's just one of those where, when we're not, when we're not doing, going by use--
That's right.
Then we, then we, so maybe you have to be a building of a certain width, maybe--
It could be one of the block faces.
There can be some other places. Councilmember Ennis, you said you want some separation, but do you have a feel, is that, do you want a building's width of separation? Do you want 10 feet? What, you know, what kind of, and I'm not saying exactly 10 feet, but, you know, ideally, when you say some separation, do you mean opposite sides of the road? Or what do you mean?
No, I, if, if we wanted to create, say, a theater district and have four theaters in one block, I mean, what would, what would be something that would create a, to get rid of the tacky element--
Sure.
--and create something that's worth looking at?
Right.
And that's not my bailiwick, so I can't say 10 feet, or five feet, or--
What we can do, Councilmember, is we can run some analysis and come back with some recommendations, whether it's one per block face, or alternating block face, or in this particular setting, that building is probably, you know, 100 feet wide, and so maybe it's able to take up a percentage, and it needs to be in the center of the building. We can write some standards and bring it back to the council for policy conversation.
I just want, it's got to be something besides, I was the first one in, so no one else can have, you know, we, we need to be fair and consistent, in, in my opinion. And, and honestly, Councilmember Ennis hadn't really thought about a theater district. Then it might be perfectly fine for him to be right next, if there were four, that might be kind of cool, you know?
Right.
You know, at that end of the block, if it's all a theater district, that, that could be something kind of cool. So to the city manager's point, by no means am I saying, and no tacky signs. That's, that's not, but I just think we need to, if we're not going to restrict them, then they could be everywhere. Are you okay with them being everywhere? I just think we need to do both sides of the coin.
And, and I think that by answering the question of how do they function properly, if you can't get enough distance between them--
Yes.
--to do what he said on the sidewalk, then we've got a problem. They're no longer informing the public as they're walking down the sidewalk, you got to stop and do this, and they fail their purpose. So--
That's right.
By answering the why, you solve the problem.
Yep, yep.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Well, not only the distance, y'all may have already addressed this, but also the number within a specific area, or within a defined area, because then that number, does that number then become tacky? Or it becomes, well, tacky, I was going to make other comments, but I'll stay with tacky.
So, so can I do something I really hate doing? Can, can we not get to the tacky place? Because tacky is in the eye of the beholder. And when you start talking about signage in First Amendment speech, we, I think, get into some very dangerous places when we start talking about signage and tacky. I think what we can do is deal with your concerns from a functionality and the why. Why is a marquee sign necessary? What is its purpose? What is its intended function for the walker? And I think we can regulate it there. But I think when we start using words like tacky, I think, if we're not making Alan nervous, you're making me extraordinarily nervous, because we don't do code enforcement for ugly or tacky.
Right.
And I, I really want us to be cautious of that.
I'll withdraw the word. I haven't--
Thank you.
I have no, no experience in art appreciation, so I'll withdraw any word.
Thank you.
So maybe what it becomes is, for it to be functional, maybe it becomes size to the, to the building.
Right.
You know, so that if it sticks out 10 feet, you have to really have quite a bit of frontage. And if it's a smaller building, but it's function, it's a music venue, but it's a small venue, maybe you can have a marquee sign, but it can't stick out 10 feet, you know, so that it's in, in size and scope of the, the building width, maybe a way, just a suggestion.
Yes, ma'am.
More to the point of being consistent about how they're, how and where they're allowed.
Yes, ma'am. That's really helpful. Thank you. So then, again, the next type of sign is nameplate sign, and it's generally--
Councilmember Ennis, did you, did you have one? I didn't--
Oh, sorry.
Okay. I just want to make sure, right, you had the chance.
For multi-tenant buildings, they're located in P3, 4, or 5. They're for home, office, or commercial locations. And, next sign is the outdoor display case, for example, for menus or services where you're walking along the street edge, and it's informing what's inside of the building. So, the next sign type would be--
I can't read your, go back, I can't read the, I was maybe looking at the wrong TV.
Oops.
Three, four, and five. Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Three, four, and five. Sidewalk signs, also some called, sometimes called A-frame signs, will be located, it's, it's considered a freestanding sign. It's not attached to the building. They're generally double-sided, and they're temporary sidewalk, sidewalk signs that may be located in a parking strip, or along the sidewalk, as long as there's four to six foot of clearance within the sidewalk for a clear zone, to meet ADA complacency. And generally, they're put out during the day and brought in at night.
So, Mr. Jones, if it requires a four to, I don't know why I called you Mr. Jones, sorry, Mr. Lewis.
That's okay.
If it requires a four to six foot clearance, and the sidewalk in front of your building is three and a half feet, you can't have one, right?
Yes, ma'am. That's correct. It'd be an obstruction of right-of-way.
Okay.
If you have a three and a half foot sidewalk, you have bigger problems.
Maybe for that type of signage.
That may be the case, but we've got some situations in town where this is a real problem. So it has become an enforcement issue that the police department have had to take care of, because it becomes an obstruction for people that count on that sidewalk, and people thinking that they're entitled to the space outside their door, which is public right of play. So it is a, it is a challenge that is a real problem today that we will be addressing as we move forward with this.
Is there a reason you give it a range? Why, why wouldn't you just say minimum of four foot clearance after the sign?
Yes, ma'am. That's, it is worded that way.
Okay, just, you know, for clarity, I'm, I'm thinking if I'm Chief Al Gelt, I don't want to have, you know, that, as soon as you start--
Right. It's currently worded at four. And depending on the sidewalk section, or the street section, you could make it where it has six, but it's, four is a minimum.
No, that's fine. I just want, if you know, I'm completely fine with that.
Yes, ma'am.
That it's four in some instances, and six in other instances, but it ought to be consistent, that if you're at this street type, this is what it's got to do.
Yes, ma'am.
And you said the right word. It's the street type--
That's correct.
--that will dictate this.
And the, and all of these sign types will be determined by street type, and by place type, and character district. And so all of the elements are going to make up the individual characteristics of the signage. And so the next sign type we have is the band sign, and these--
I'm sorry. So how do you address people that, because signage is going to be everywhere, and not, not all of our streets are going to meet our street type?
That's correct.
So, we talked about that at the workshop last week, where particularly the 71 district, the reason that we created and carved that out was for signage, because you've got pole signs. But there will be instances where existing conditions will be taken into consideration, and that's one of the beautiful things with y'all having individual character districts, that y'all can look at the geographically sensitive nature of the existing environment, and accommodate those in those specific areas without having to citywide take a one-size-fits-all approach when it doesn't.
So, there is no sense of, this is a weird question. I've never even thought of before. You, you can't get grandfathered the right to have a sandwich sign in front of your property. Is that correct?
When you say sandwich--
When you say sandwich sign, are we talking A-frame sign?
Yeah, I'm sorry, the, the A-frame--
It's a freestanding, it's a freestanding sign. It's movable. I would not say that there's vesting rights on, on freestanding sign like that.
I would agree. I don't--
Okay, and I would think so. So I'm just saying, council needs to be aware, and I'm not having a problem with it, but we could be as close to this street type. Maybe that's something that we need to be aware of in districts, that it may be if you don't have the four foot clearance, if you don't have a wide enough sidewalk, or what, you may have had a--
That's right.
--an A-frame out there for five years, but when we adopt these codes, it's, it's in violation, and you got to pick it up. Am I understanding that correctly? Councilmember Ennis?
I think we do need to find out how this impacts our downtown area.
Yes, sir.
Whatever we come up with, because--
I think that, that we need to recognize that the conditions we've got today will be changed when we complete the 1.9 million dollar rehabilitation project, because part of that is to expand and fix the sidewalks.
I was hoping that was going to be your statement.
I have a question. So you're just regulating the amount of, of four foot after the, or beside your A-frame sign.
Yes, ma'am.
So let's say they have a, an issue with their sidewalk. They could have a smaller A-frame sign--
That's right.
--and still have the four feet. So you're not regulating the size of their A-frame.
No, they can have a narrower--
Just whether they have enough feet, the four foot after that.
That's correct. Yes, that's correct. I was about to address that as well. They could have a narrower sign type, if, if it would allow for the proper clearance for ADA complacency.
Are you going to set a maximum width?
The, we don't have them determined yet. No. It does not have a maximum width at this point, as long as there's clearance.
So I got an eight-foot sidewalk, I can have a four-foot wide?
Yes, ma'am.
And that's, and everybody's okay with that?
And what we will do is get the council all of the dimensions for the signs. We're working on them now. We're going to go back and re-study some of your downtown signs, just to make sure that they're getting calibrated to the appropriate-- just to make sure that they're getting calibrated to the appropriate scale, and then we're going to be introducing those standards. We're almost done with those. The other thing I was going to run through tonight is the types of signs that we're proposing that would not require permits. We've got about 12 of them that we're recommending that don't need permits unless there's a construction, which I'll go through those in just a few minutes here as well. So the next sign type was a band sign, and generally you'll notice buildings downtown have a place for band signs. And so they're determined that the sign would go in there. Generally, it's about 90% of the width of the building, and it would take up the entire dimension of the band. And so those are generally located along commercial uses and would be allowed in place type 4 and 5. Next permitted sign type would be window signage, and window signs shall not interfere with the primary function of windows. It's the only thing that is established in there, and it is enabled for passive buyers and public safety personnel to see in through the windows. And that's the only thing that is regulated on the window signs. Next, you would have a yard sign, and so it could be a single or double post yard sign located within the private frontage. And so these would be allowed for P3 for home offices, place type 4 and 5. Place type 5 would be only where there's particular setbacks from the buildings. Generally, in place type 5, the buildings are going to be brought right up to the street, and the sign type generally would not have room or depth within place type 5, but there may be some instances where they would be appropriate, and so we coded them.
So the yard sign for P3 is something we currently don't allow that would be new?
That's correct. This is a new allowance for home office.
So that means I'm in Riverside Grove, no, let me move across the street to Hunter's Crossing, and my next-door neighbor has gone to school and is now doing nails. She could have a sign in front yard or not in Hunter's Crossing, because there's deed restrictions in the PDD. But it would be allowed in Riverside Grove, because it does not have a PDD.
That would be correct. And so on these, we say it's a maximum of six square feet. The width is no more than three square feet. The height is no more than two square feet. And the clearance must be three feet of the edge of the sign, and so the top of the post cannot be higher than four feet.
So this may be one, that we would go by character districts and decide whether or not they were allowed, because otherwise that means every single residence could have one.
So Mr. City Attorney, let's go back to the mayor's example of Hunter's Crossing. If it is not allowed by deed restriction and we do not manage civil issues, if somebody came in and obtained a sign permit in Hunter's Crossing and put a sign out there and the HOA didn't like it, HOA could take them to court, but we don't have any responsibility to enforce their deed restrictions, do we?
That's right. City Manager, not only do we not have a duty to enforce it, we're not allowed to. It's an either-or choice in Texas. Cities must choose to either have zoning or to civilly enforce deed restrictions.
So in those instances, it seems to me we would want to restrict the character district and not allow them, so that we don't have city staff issuing a sign that they're then getting sued by their homeowners association, because they won't be happy with us.
That would be a good way to avoid, you know, having those opportunities for neighbor-on-neighbor or POA violence.
I'm not in favor of having yard signs in P3.
That's the other thing I was going to say. We can remove them from P3 in totality.
Is there a differentiation between permanent signs and temporary signs such as a four-cell sign?
We do. Yes, sir. There's a differentiation with the size, with the time period that they can be displayed. So, yes, sir, there are temporary signs. And so under the temporary signs or signs which do not require permits, for example, if you're doing a sign that would be a special event sign or a permit sign or garage sale sign or a business sign, then they would be able to be, for example, 30-day, special event signs, we said they cannot be put up 30 days prior, only 30 days prior to the event, but must be taken down seven days after the event, you know, must be taken down by that date. So those would be temporary situations.
So Councilmember Ennis has suggested that these signs not be allowed in P3, and we are not voting on this tonight, but it would be helpful if Mr. Lewis had some indication as to whether this is going to be contentious or if we're all pretty much in agreement. So, Councilmember Peterson, do you have thoughts about allowing these signs in P3?
In the mic? I'm sorry. I would request that the signs of that nature not be allowed in P3.
Okay. Councilmember Rogers?
I agree, without P3.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
I concur.
Councilmember Jones?
Okay, so let me get this straight. We did say that people could have accessory units on their property and run a business. So this is an important distinction. There is a difference between using your property in a commercial manner and advertising that it's commercial.
Okay.
And I think the issue here is, is P3 is nothing but neighborhood development. It is intended to be housing. So if you dedicated an office to doing an office work and you were not creating a nuisance to the community and we didn't know you were doing it, there's nothing to prevent you. When you hang a sign out in your front yard, you're letting the world know you're running a business out of your house. And that really is in conflict with the spirit of what P3 is intended. P4, on the other hand, begins to allow you to use houses for commercial use. And we talked about David Bragg's office is a great example. It's a home. He's converted to a business. Well, in P4, this sign would be perfect. So it's still a house, but it's by its very nature kind of a mixed-use type of development, very different than a P3 that's intended to be residential uses only. Okay, well, I just think maybe we might want to consider allowing people something, like maybe if it's like a plaque on the house or something. I'm just, you know, I don't like the big sign in the yard and sticking out and it's a neighborhood, but...
They are allowed to have the blades on, correct?
They are...
But just, you know, maybe look at bringing some, we don't have to hammer it out tonight, but I'm just saying maybe look at some options that we could possibly consider that would be appropriate.
Mayor, could I ask you to reframe the question for council before we go on this? Does the rest of the council support Councilmember Jones's alternative suggestion, or are y'all against commercial signage in a residential district?
So the reframe of the question is, let's be specific. Do you want to allow commercial signage in P3 in a residential district? Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
I'm only referencing the yard sign. I would have no problem with a window sign. Well, no, I'm going to withdraw that. No signage. If we're set aside a P3 and it's residential, then signage, no.
Have you finalized on that?
I've finalized it. You reframed the question, so I had to reframe my answer.
Okay, well, there you go. There you go. Councilmember Rogers, thoughts on commercial signs in residential area?
Well, you have to go back, because you even had the placard was allowed in P3, so you're going to have to go back some.
That one is...
I mean, so like, this one you're taking away. They can't put that they're...
And there's another, well, the other one is address sign. The address sign, this outdoor display case and the yard sign were the three that were coded currently for three.
I just wanted the council to know that you're looking at three different signs that he's already went over, that you're taking away.
That are allowed in P3?
Yes. And we would remove these from the allowance for P3.
That's what I would like.
Okay, so you're saying no commercial signs in P3. Councilmember Peterson?
We have many houses around Bastrop that have gone commercial. I just dislike the yard sign, excuse me. I dislike the yard sign, but as far as putting a plaque sign on the actual building, I've got no issues with that.
Okay, so you're okay with a placard sign?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
None in P3. My neighborhood would go up in smoke, seriously.
Councilmember Jones?
I didn't say I wanted to allow it or not. I just said I thought it might be a good idea just to allow Matt the opportunity to present something that we could possibly consider.
I don't believe there's a consensus to do that.
Right. I mean, part of, Matt's got a lot on his plate, and so part of having the discussions tonight is to give him some policy direction so that he knows that he's working on something, that we're not going to come back and if we're not going to approve it, it's not really a super good use of his time, is I think what the City Manager's point.
I have one more question for Matt.
Yes, sir.
How about signs, say architectural signs or renovation signs or things that people put in yards saying, "This project's done by," that kind of thing?
Yes, sir. So those are under signs that would not require a permit, and they would be allowed during construction. So governmental signs, directional signs, identification signs for construction, yard sale signs, real estate signs, hanging signs, seasonal signs, bulletin boards, construction project signs, and political signs, special event signs. So those are signs that we have that don't require a permit. They would be allowed, but they're temporary in nature. Generally, they're up and then down.
You got it covered. Great.
Yes, sir.
So Matt, and I know you're probably working on this through today, but it would be very helpful to have this in a Dropbox?
Yes, ma'am.
Because part of this is we're...
It's already been provided. I just haven't uploaded it.
Okay, great. So we'll have that for reference. And Councilmember Ennis, last week, we had the conversation about Main Street and particularly in North Bastrop, wanting to allow some P4, and there was a discussion of maybe it's not a strip, but maybe it's a percentage of the block or whatever would be P4. P4 is commercial use in a home-based architectural type, and they would be, as a P4, they would be allowed that yard sign.
Yes, ma'am.
So if we have P4 in a predominantly P3 area, we just need to know that that means that those, I believe it's, hmm, maybe, I guess you could do it by character district, but we can't say, oh, we can have P4 and P4s are allowed, all of these things, except, oops, we didn't want that thing. So we would have to restrict it, restrict the sign by character district?
So you were batting a thousand until you got to the caveat.
So here is the unintended consequence of the journey that we are taking, and that is there are always going to be the one or two that don't want to play by the rules. And they end up souring the bucket for everybody. And so let me talk about some of the exceptions that he's proposing. And one is a special event sign. That seems fairly innocuous, except you're going to have businesses that have special events 365 days of the year. And so every time we go through there, they're going to have a sign in addition to the sign, and I'm going to get a call from you one day, and you're going to say...
I'm tired of all this.
I'm tired of it, and I need the chief to go out there and do something about it. And the chief's going to read the ordinance, and the chief's going to show up at my office, and he's going to say, "Well, that's all well and fine, ma'am, but I can't do it because you haven't given me the authority to do it." And so one of the things that we're going to vet through all of this, and I want to remind us of the intent, just because it's not allowed by right in the code does not mean you cannot do it. It just means staff can't approve it. So there are going to be some caveats in this, where if people want to do that, that's great, but that's a policy decision y'all get elected to make. There will be an application process, and they're more than willing to come and stand before you and plead whatever case they want, and then y'all can make that decision. So just understand that there are going to be some things that I'm going to push back on. You may be comfortable with it, but I don't want to get beat with the bat I know's coming. So we're going to save ourselves from that. I don't want the staff of P and Z to have to be the sign police when y'all have pretty much said you can do whatever you want to. So the conversation tonight really needs to be the guidance that you're giving us, but we'll go back and we're going to point some of these things out, and I'm going to bring them back to you. And I'm going to encourage you to really think long and hard about what you're doing, because some of us have been in the business of code enforcement a long time, and no good deed goes unpunished. And we just need to make sure that we've taken care of the masses, but when we start putting asterisks, that's just an application they need to come see you about.
And the conversation's not going to get any easier, so we might as well have it now. It's allowed or it's not allowed, and then if a future council wants to amend that policy, then that's fine, but I think that's part of those bar ditches that you're looking for, right?
Yes, ma'am. That's correct.
Okay. Councilmember Ennis, you had your, did you have a final comment? I thought your light was on a while ago. It's not on now.
Yeah, but you probably don't want to hear it.
No, I always, now's the, I'd rather hear it now than later. What you got?
Your comment about North, North Bastrop.
Okay. Well, I just want us, it's really and truly any place that we said we're going to allow some P4, I just, if, I need to know of what's in the sign codes, is, does that become something that automatically transfers with that place type? So...
Still having problems with having more than one place type in a character district. So, and that's something we're going to have to settle.
Okay. Okay.
So we'll remove all commercial signage from P3. All of the signage will be removed from P3. And so the next thing we will do is get into freestanding signs. So freestanding signs, monument sign, for example, freestanding signs don't attach to buildings. They're individual structures that are self-supporting, and they're generally on-premise signs that are erected, again, that their principal fronted, I'm sorry, their principal function is to support the main signs that are already in place. And so monument signs, for example, these will be determined by street type, and scaled and size requirements will be done by place type. This is place time. That was a mistake. And then there will be transitional sizes that will be established for places that are coming more into compliance with the code. So if you have buildings that are really far setback, and let's say that they're going to remove some parking and put in awnings or pergolas or outdoor cafes, so they're bringing it more into compliance, then maybe they're allowed to have certain signage, but it may not be the ultimate scale of these areas. And so we're basically coming up with a metrics to help offset and mitigate those types of ideas and options. And again, these are, we're going to be recommending particular to character districts of how these would function and the scale, size, illumination, those individual elements, which we'll be providing you. One of the big conversations, and this is going to go back to the opening slide, is pole signs. The way that we've written...
Hold that thought. Mr. Porcas, our little friends in Austin may take care of our ability to restrict these. Is this correct?
I'm sorry, Mayor. I haven't seen anything on pole signs. I've definitely seen issues on billboards, off-site signs.
Okay. All right. But as in everything else, when they get done with the legislative session, we'll have to see what passes and then bounce that up against whatever we've got, correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Sorry, Mr. Lewis.
And these, right now, the current recommendation in the code is along Highway 71 frontage, maximum of 60 square feet with 40 feet in height. It's similar to what you have in the existing ordinance, and so that was the intent. But it would, we're recommending that it be determined by a street type and then further refined by size and design requirements by character district or by place type.
And I want to hint on something that Matt just said. We are working very hard where it is appropriate, excuse me, to keep the existing sign size, because what we do not want to do is create a lot of legal non-conforming signs that just become a beating in and of themselves. So the case, or the pole signs and things like that, we have them. There is something to be said for being consistent and how we regulate that going forward. So when people need to repair their sign or do something different, we haven't replaced a lack of recollection with something that's just so onerous, it's not even funny.
Yes, ma'am. That's correct. And the last type of special sign would be murals. And so maybe there's mural programs that you have, or particular buildings that get targeted, or many cities now are going to mural programs to bring those up. And you have some murals in town that are great and informative and capture some of the history and those types of things. So those are the last types of signs, and we think it could be advantageous to introduce those. So that concludes the sign portion of this code. We will get those standards. We'll update those and get those back to the city councils.
Do you have the nerdy chart somewhere?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. When, if it's not already in your packet, would you send me the nerdy chart so I can get a feel for all the difference in where they're allowed?
Yes, ma'am.
So essentially, the process that we've gone through tonight...
So essentially, the process that we've gone through tonight, the only things that I hear are marquee signs that we need to regulate them so that they function properly. We're going to remove P3 signage from the sign ordinance because that really is intended to be a residential application. And the intent is that staff will go through and review what Matt proposes by right, and we will offer some suggestions to ensure we don't unintentionally create problems. It's not going to prevent people from doing it. It just may not be easy. It may require another step.
Counsel, are you, Councilmember Rogers?
I just had a question about maybe, I'm not sure if you're, well, I'm sure you are going to address it, but maybe lighting, like that yard sign, I mean, can they put lights on it? Can they not put lights on it? You know?
Yes, ma'am. And so the way it's written currently is it'd be externally illuminated with lighting that...
Oh, I was just making sure you had addressed it.
Oh, yes.
Not asking what you're going to be, just making sure you had addressed it somehow.
Yes, ma'am. Each sign type would have illumination requirements with them as well.
Okay.
And those also could be done by character district. So if you wanted goose neck lighting downtown for external illumination, some, I know a lot about some, channel letters or box letter signs or internally illuminated, maybe those go in certain areas or not. And so those types of signs are going to be, that'd be a really good policy conversation. We can bring that back for maybe a workshop or something with you all.
Cool.
Signage is complex.
Councilmember, if we can get down from 64, it's a step in the right direction. Councilmember Jones?
So I just wanted to make a recommendation on the murals, and that is, just to sort of keep that out of planning and zoning, is that mural designs be run maybe through the historic, or some committee, you know? I'm just thinking historic because of downtown.
What about Bastrop Art and Public Places?
Yes, or Mastrop Art and Public Places. I'm just saying that that just be run through a committee versus run through the...
But that feels more like content rather than location.
Can I understand what your concern is with staff?
Oh, I just think it's going to be sort of time-consuming, just because it's something that's going to...
And a committee isn't?
That's just my recommendation. I just think it would be more productive and be a better use of everybody's time if that was run through either Bastrop Art and Public Places or Historic Deal for Downtown, but I mean, clearly you have a problem with that.
If it's a landmark, it has to go through landmark.
If they are painted on the side of a building like that mural, we don't currently require a permit, do we?
Yeah, that's right. If it's not specifically advertising a business, it's considered art, not a sign, I believe.
And it doesn't come to us.
And if they have their building, they can put whatever art they want on their building.
That's what I'm saying. I just think that there should be a policy for where those do go, so people don't just put up whatever. But I mean, if you don't care about what you get, I mean, not you, but just in general, but I would think that we would want to have some sort of, especially I'm thinking about like downtown on the side of buildings.
So to this point, we have not been willing to regulate what people do on private property, and so that's why we currently do not regulate this. So it's not necessarily signage, it's art, and we have not to this point regulated art. But if you add a committee or additional steps, that is adding a step that doesn't currently exist.
And I, as soon as it goes to an advisory board, then if they don't like what the advisory board says, they're going to be at council, and I don't think I want to be saying, "Mr. Jones wants to paint this on the side of his building that he owns, and Mr. Lewis says, 'I don't like the color that he's, I don't like that color scheme, and he can't do it.'" I don't think I want to be, I'm just glad I don't have to vote. Councilmember Jones? I wouldn't be involved in the vote, is what I'm saying. I think that, I think we are asking for a tough situation. So I, is, there's location and there's content, and what we're saying is if the location is on, right now, today, if the location is a private building and the owner of that building decides what content they want, like the mural that we're looking at, there's no permit required, and we don't restrict that. Councilmember Ennis, you're making the point that if it's a, you said if there's, it's a historic landmark building, then they do have to come get permission to paint the mural? That your mic's not on. Your mic's not on.
If it can be seen from right away.
That's through the Historic Landmarks Commission.
Yeah.
And, okay, and Councilmember Jones, you want to be, you are suggesting that we might want to have an input on any mural?
I don't know. I just, I was specifically talking about stuff downtown, and I don't really even want to get into it, but I know there's been a lot of issues with people not being allowed to do stuff, and you're telling me this is the first time I've ever heard this. You don't have to have a permit for art. That's not what my understanding was, so I think that's great. We just need to make it clear and decide how we want to move forward.
Okay, except that what scares me about the comment that you made is you said specifically downtown, and I believe, Councilmember Ennis, help me if I'm wrong, the vast majority of those buildings downtown are historic?
Well, if they're in the landmark program. If they're not...
Then they don't have to.
Then they don't have to.
What's, what's the percentage of the buildings on Main Street that are in landmark? Do we have any idea?
I think there's 186, 137. So really, the only time somebody has to come to the city to get a permit is if, like, they're advertising the side of their building with the name of their business, because then that becomes a sign.
And I will clarify on the buildings downtown, if it's exposed brick, they're not allowed to paint over, on exposed brick. If it's already a sealed painted brick, they can, if it's art. It's because paint has destructive effects on older brick and things like that. That's the issue. But most of downtown is in a national registered district, so most of the buildings that front Main Street.
So this particular building that put this on the side of their building did not get a sign permit?
Nope.
Because it is considered art?
Yes.
And they are not a historic building?
No, this is on the side of the gas station.
Yeah, I know where it is.
It was already, it was painted CMU, so...
So you're saying that if you own a historic building downtown and you want to put art on the side, but it's brick that's never been painted, then that's illegal?
Yes. It's not allowed.
Why, could you seal the brick and then paint it?
Potentially. We could look into that. But that's been the history of why the buildings haven't painted.
But sealing the brick changes the historical reference that has to go through state and federal requirements to be approved.
And also sealing the brick sometimes affects your neighbor if it's a, that's part of the problem we've had with 921 is some of that seepage of water type of thing. It opens up a can of worms.
Yeah, I feel like we're in a big can of worms right now. So it sounds like in y'all's spare time, it might be helpful to have a little clarity on what the mural requirements are now, to see, what are we now? Do we need to change anything? Maybe it's just fine, but it's pretty clear that there is not clarity on what the rules are now.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that fair? Okay. All right. Yay, signs.
Yeah. Thank you for doing that with us. That was, that was helpful. Next, we're going to jump into pattern book and architectural styles. I'm going to bring up Milosov Sekic. He's going to walk through those with the particular architectural styles, introduce you all to the pattern book, and this is just the introduction of the conversation. There's going to be plenty more that we will be bringing back before you all as well.
And Mayor and Council, I want to restate what I have already stated before. This pattern book is intended to give architectural guidance to staff and the development community for those that want to go through the process and not come to P and Z and council. So this is what you are going to ultimately authorize, is if it's in this book, it's okay. So it's not saying that if...
They can only do what's in the book.
Bingo. If there are other types of architectural that, design that somebody is intent on doing, that's great. If it's not in the book, it just means they need to go through the process. Takes a little time, but they need to go plead their case before P and Z and council. So again, y'all don't need to take this as a definitive, very black and white, no gray madder conversation. It's just, what are you comfortable saying yes to? And if you're not comfortable saying yes to it, then it won't be in the pattern book, and if they want to do it, they can come talk to you.
And then the, make the link between pattern book and character districts.
Essentially, what will happen is we would be seeking from the council, are all of the architectural styles being recommended allowed in all of the character districts? Are there particular styles that belong in certain character districts that, and not others? Those are the types of policy conversations that would be helpful as we go through this.
The goal tonight is, Milosov has a series of pictures that he wants input in. This is an instance where we have somebody that is just absolutely fabulous at what he does. I think the goal this evening is to give him some direction with the architecture that you're interested in, let him go do what he does best, and then we can come back and frame some additional policy conversations. But this, again, when I think about places where political cover is needed, in order for the concept of the Bastrop building blocks to work, we need to make sure that as things are built, the community is proud of them, looks at it, say, "Yeah, that's authentic Bastrop." When you start deviating from that, and we start having conversations publicly like we've had tonight, "Well, that's ugly," or "It's tacky," or whatever, then staff ends up losing because the thought is, is we could have said no. And in nine times out of 10, if you don't regulate architecture through a pattern book like this, you can't say no. So one of the things y'all have been abundantly clear is we need to protect what makes Bastrop Bastrop, and I would argue a big chunk of what makes Bastrop Bastrop is the architecture. So that's really the intent of what we're trying to accomplish this evening. So start it.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Milosov Sekic. I've been spearheading the effort on the pattern book for about two and a half weeks now, and we're getting into all kinds of building types, and we will be presenting to you probably a lot more material in the very near future. But tonight, we probably will talk primarily about the single-family rest, single-family homes, because they represent the bulk of the built environment anyway, and those are buildings where you can really discern and recognize the styles that have existed here for the last 150, 180 years. We have reviewed the area, the region, including architecture in Bastrop, Elgin, and Smithville, and have concluded that there are about four historically-present styles of architecture in the single-family home characteristics or group that we would like for you to consider and see if, you know, they can be a part of this pattern book. However, we're not suggesting that those are the only types of buildings that can be built. To the contrary, I think what the policy decision ought to be is, what is the role of the pattern book? Is it a recommendation, or is it a mandatory thing to be followed? So that's a very important decision. I've seen pattern books that do both. For the most part, though, there have been actually a set of recommendations based on the region that have the power of actually connecting all the players in the, in the realization of the built environment together, because there is, there's a certain thing that we can all gather around and have a common understanding from which we can begin to work together. And that includes developers, city, city staff. There also needs to be a process of review and approval, and what that authority is, we don't know at this point. Usually, it's either town architect, so you may want to consider establishing the position of the town architect within the city, or it is a design review committee. At one of these meetings, we will probably try to outline the responsibilities and the tasks of the town architect, so we can discuss that and see what it means. Anyway, to start with the, with the styles, architectural style, yeah, I'll probably be repeating what you already know about the styles in Bastrop. But style basically represents, not just in, in architecture, but in fashion, in clothing, represents works that exhibit consistent qualities and features that group them together into a group. So these buildings, you know, have a recognizable feature that make them fall into, say, Victorian. So those four styles are Victorian, classical, hill country vernacular, and craftsman. That, that's actually a recommendation from me or from the team for you to consider. Also, we would like to present to you an opportunity to consider modern buildings. As a practicing architect, I get, I get more and more requests to do modern buildings, and our understanding of modern buildings sometimes can be pretty superficial. If you, if you put buildings, if you build a building with no eaves, if you get flat roofs or shed roofs, that's considered modern. So there are no rules written for the modern, but there are certain characteristics that I will share with you a little bit later. There's also a place in Colorado that's been pushing the limits of what it means to interpret tradition and how you can really enliven the new built environment that is not necessarily copying. That's another issue, how we deal with tradition. What I've learned in my years of experience is that the best way some of the new things happen is through the process of imitation and innovation. Imitation, however, is different than copying. Imitation requires you to understand the underlying principles of what is being done, and then you can either accept the lessons of the past, or you can do an informal rejection after considering it. So traditional buildings are always, not always appropriate for what we do. So we're basically engaging the past both as, as a, as a norm. I don't want to get too complicated, but unless you have a norm, it's difficult to create any innovation. You need to get away from something or be different than something.
And as it was said tonight, that would keep us historically hip, would it not?
Pardon me?
Said another way, if we respect and imitate while innovating, that would allow Bastrop to stay historically hip.
Yes. You don't have to repeat the historic details to a T. The thing is to emulate, to emulate that part of our traditional neighborhoods that showed the, the real form of richness and diversity. And they are all around us. Everywhere in the United States, there are these traditional neighborhoods that originated anywhere between 1830 and 1950, where we started this levee town and all these mass-produced houses and developments with spaghetti streets and all of that. So anyway, to start with the, with the classical style. At first, when I first visited Bastrop several years ago, and when we're doing the farm, I mean, farm-based code, I didn't realize, I realized that there were actually a lot of classical style buildings in here. So over the last few months, you know, we've discovered that there are a lot more of that. So I'm going to just read a very few characteristics of this style.
I can flip through the slides if you want.
Okay, okay. Okay, the basic classical house has a simple rectangular volume, either one or two stories, with hip or gable roofs. Often, it has a temple front porch facing the street but remaining the part of the main body of the house. The porch is the most important element for the classical house, can be one or two stories, straight or curved, and often utilizes Greek or Roman columns and a variety of detailing on the beams above. The word is entablature, but I didn't know if that word, it's not just a beam, but some ornaments on it as well. Houses are usually symmetrical through carefully balanced isometric, although carefully balanced asymmetrical compositions are also possible. Rings are generally narrow and of similar proportions added to the side or to the back. Roof pitches are constant, consistent, and can vary from six to 12, to 12, 12 and 12, most common being eight and 12. Windows are multi-pane, most commonly six over six or nine over nine, with the first floor windows being taller than the second floor windows. Dormers occur in both gable and hip roof types, usually proportioned for a single window. There is an orderly relationship among columns, windows, doors, porches, and roof forms. Eaves and cornices are usually well detailed. Materials used for this style include stone, bricks, tuckle, shingles for access, and horizontal siding.
So, Milosov, let me ask this question. Based on what you just read, how could one imitate but be innovative? Is there a succinct answer to that?
Well, that depends on the designer. I mean, that's, that's where you, you come up with your creativity, you know, how you understand and apply the lessons of the past.
So if we were to adopt a pattern book, based on the specifics that you just read, that really begin to describe what these styles are, how much flexibility does one have in order to be innovative before they are violating the intent or the integrity of the pattern book?
That's really difficult to answer. I think that is something that the Town Architectural Design Review Committee would determine.
Okay. So the intent of that is to take those types of questions and clarify whether or not... So, the intent of that is to take those types of questions and clarify whether or not it is innovative imitation versus copying? And that's the point you were trying to make.
Yes.
If you are copying something, you don't understand the intent. If you are imitating and innovative, you understand what makes classical style classical, and you are emulating that perhaps in a historically hip way that takes something that in 2019 can still look classical without looking like 1919, which is your point.
Well, this is a classical revival. I mean, this type of building that you see now actually originated in the South, and it was a reduction of the classical style to a much more simpler structure that has usually a hip roof with one central gable and colonnade in the front. And this is when you begin to apply these classical principles or Victorian principles that usually go with the very large-scale buildings, buildings of stature and importance, to a more modest residences. That's how what they call the folk Victorian originated in the South, when they started using Victorian principles for these smaller, more modest buildings. The second style is Victorian, and again, I'm going to quickly read through this. Victorian-style homes are dominated by a steeply pitched gable roof facing the street. This is Elgin City Hall, one of the more, I would say, elaborate Victorian buildings in the area. The main gable may be combined with wings on two sides or emerge from a larger hip-rooted rectangular volume. Symmetry is optional. Usually, general one-story porch is integrated into the front facade. This is the White House in Bastrop. Gable, hip, shed, or special dormers are typically employed to provide additional floor area daylight and architectural interest. Overall composition usually features symmetrically placed vertically proportioned double-handled windows. Simplified ornamentation occurs at porches, gable ends, and special features such as bay windows and towers. Appropriate materials include primarily horizontal siding, and more rarely, at least in this area, brick. The application of the style is seldom pure, and borrowing from different stylistic approaches is evident in the central Texas Victorian. In Bastrop, Elgin, and Smithville, there are hybrids that borrow from both the classical as well the arts and crafts movement, and this mix of various style components is sometimes making it difficult to characterize them, but produces an interesting character which blends with other styles and yet stands on its own. So, there are different buildings, Victorian buildings in, say, New Braunfels, in Georgetown, in Bernie, than they are here. These are not pure, and that makes them more interesting, but also makes them harder to emulate because the elements are not so easy to discern and articulate.
Excuse me. Could you, is it possible for you to maybe include examples of successful innovation?
Which, I'm sorry?
Of successful innovation, because you're talking about different areas where people have gone in and...
Yeah, we have some slides later that would hopefully eliminate a little bit on that. The next is hill country vernacular. Vernacular architecture, as different from styles that actually originate in certain areas and spread to other areas in a variety of ways, is usually locally born. It's people using certain ways of building over the years, using local materials, most of the time labor-intensive, you know, practice to generate their different mode of architecture, and seldom pay attention to what's really going on nationally. So, this is one of those. This is the hill country vernacular is actually one of the more authentic, I would say, directions in American architecture, because it was made very popular by some very famous Texas architects, actually O'Neil Ford and Lake Flato, who have established this as, you know, what they call it Texas whinstone architecture in some other places. But it's, I think, a genuine connection to the areas where the style originated and it's being developed within its own character, I think, in both modern and traditional idioms.
So, the key to this particular style is the building materials more than the architecture?
Well, not necessarily. I think, there's a book called A Lesson in Geometry, and the thing about this particular building type, I mean, style, is that buildings are composed through simple juxtaposition of pure Euclidean geometric forms, rectangles and triangles in a variety of combinations. The two principal components of the house are the main space and the porch, or the lean-on rooms. The main space is usually an elongated rectangle, with the porch is commonly placed along the longer side of the main space. Sometimes, the main space has an L configuration, which you have here, a couple of them, with the porch and the entry placed at the inside corner of the L. Porch is a crucial architectural component in the hot Texas climate. While in more urban settings, porch serves as a demarcation line between the public and the private, in the Texas hill country, the porch is a necessary transitional space between the inside and outside, necessary for the proper functioning of the building. A special kind of porch is sometimes placed in the middle of the house to separate the sleeping quarters from the cooking areas in the hot Texas climate, and it's a famous dog trot that you all know. It is interplay between the main space and the porch, or the lean-to, that the variety of expression can be created. Porches can be added onto the main space, either full length or not, carved out of it, and added perpendicular to the main space. Porches can also be one or two-story. They add it directly to the main space, create a fold in the roof pitch commonly called the cat slide. So, I'm sure you've all seen that. There aren't too many craftsman buildings or craftsman-style houses built in this area. There is this Page House, there's also a Kennedy House, and a Maynard House, which would be the last slide in this group, which some people have classified as a classically-influenced building, house, building, but I don't really see any classical elements in it. So, I took to liberty and placed it in the craftsman. The principal feature of this, or the style of low to modern pitch, usually multiple gable roofs with wide openings, overhangs, unenclosed eaves, and exposed rafter tails. False beams, triangular knee braces, and brackets are often applied at gable ends. General porch is with substantial columns and bases usually elevated from the ground three to four feet. Columns are doubled or tapered and sit on strong bases or low walls. Bases are typically made in solid mason reconstruction, and sometimes porch railing are replaced by low walls. Most front facade compositions are asymmetrical, but symmetry is also an option, and depends on the orientation of the principal roof. The base of the house is usually emphasized with a different and heavier material than the siding above. Stone, brick, and tuckle are preferred. Dormers are typically one-and-a-half-story designs, either gable or shed type. Usually, they are not mixed. Wall materials include stone, bricks, tuckle, shingles, and horizontal siding. Ornamentation is restrained. Structural members are often exposed wherever possible. So, these are the four styles that we have identified for you to consider. Now, what we do with them and how we incorporate them in with the rest of the options to build single-family homes remains for us to talk about and decide.
So, what about, like, Riverside Grove and Hunter's Crossing, and, you know, what style is that? Because we're not, because I don't think any of these four would fit in that neighborhood.
Right. We do have other modern contemporary styles, and so we have a few other classifications we could go through. Those are the four key architectural styles that you have, architectural, you know, when you actually determine architectural styles.
But we need to go through this, too, because I think it would be a mistake just to ask people to do historical styles. I mean, I've visited these suburban communities designed by very famous people, and in some of them, the application of the pattern book is very strict, and the requirements are very strict in terms of following the styles. In some, they're not so. I mean, I visited Mueller, former, I mean, old airport in Austin Development, and the only style that I saw even approximating a traditional style was actually what they call contemporary craftsman style, because it had some brackets and some open beams and open rafters. The rest of the single-family homes were pretty much deprived of ornament, and although ornament is not the only thing, I mean, there is a certain relationship between the components of the building, the building and the street, the relationship of the building to the other buildings, how they create in the public realm. That's the whole, that's the main concern of urban design is actually public realm. So, we are regulating what these buildings do in their creation of the public realm.
So, let me reframe the mayor's question. And I'm not saying this because I have a preference one way or the other, but I think it speaks to the point of the pattern book, and it's the chicken in the egg. Do we want more of Riverside Grove-type development, not saying it's right or wrong, just trying to make an illustration here, because that's what the developer that went in there was building, and that's what their model homes were? So, do we want more of that because that's what we've had, or do we want to dictate them to have more features so that they're not so plain, which is what I think I hear you saying, is when you don't demand it, you don't get it? So, is that of interest to this council? Because that really is at the essence of this book. And Matt's gone on record and said to you, he doesn't think you need a pattern book. Milosoff has gone on record and told you that they do, and I'm telling you, from a political cover standpoint, I think that conversation is important, but it also gives you the asterisk that if you want something that's not here, we're not telling you no, it just requires more approval. So, I think before we get into necessarily some of the styles, I think that policy conversation has to happen so that regardless of what style Milosoff and Matt bring you, we have a context with which to do. Does that make sense?
Yeah, but I think there's a difference between infill and new developments, and what I don't want is, and I understand that the pattern book is a recommendation, but here's where I am. I've bought, and I don't even know if there are, I assume there are, I've bought an empty lot, or I'm going to tear down and rebuild a house that's infill in Hunter's Crossing or Riverside Grove. I go look in a pattern book, and there's nothing there that matches the neighborhood that I'm in. Do I then, because I'm not in desired for new developments, I have to go through extra hoops to build a house that matches the area that I'm building in, in an infilled lot?
And this is where I believe that the base code would resolve that issue, because it would place the principal building in the appropriate location based off the street type, and then what would happen is you would get to select, well, I'm going to build a front porch, I'm going to build a stoop, I'm going to build a light well, I'm going to build a courtyard building, and so then you could select the building type that you would want to build. The principal building, in the way that it relates to the street, would be all determined by the place type and the street type. So, your actual built environment would emulate the pattern that you're trying to accomplish, but would not achieve the architectural significance of the building. So, when you're walking down the street, it would feel comfortable, it would feel aligned, it would match the general characteristic. It would not be a craftsman-style house necessarily, whatever the house would be, but the characteristics of the structure, the windows, the placement of the building, the bulk of the building, the location of the parking, the way that it interrelates with the street, those characteristics would be there just in the base code. What you would not be getting is, I'm getting a craftsman house, I'm getting a Victorian...
Okay, I don't think you answered the mayor's question, so let me come at you a different way.
Yes, ma'am.
House burns down tonight. They want to come in and rebuild the house they had. It isn't in the pattern book, now what?
Can I say something about that?
That's your point.
Can I address something on that? Every one of those architectural styles, you can pick something out of that and see in houses out in Riverside Grove or in Hunter's Crossing, not in large amounts, but you're going to see little pieces of the architectural styles in every, mainly in Riverside Grove, probably not so much in Hunter's Crossing, but you don't have to build it exactly the same to have it of the same vernacular style, right?
No, no, you don't, but I think there needs to be a consistency within the building type that you're using, whatever it is. I mean, you cannot have too many articulations on the street, because then the whole thing is confusing. I've seen large ranch houses and actually homes within neighborhoods that are too large and have too many, the most important things. So, there is no hierarchy, there isn't the same way of creating the public realm like these traditional buildings do. We're not recommending that these be the only buildings. We're just asking that whatever style you use, there's some inner consistency within those buildings. The relationship between the parts of that building and the relationship to other buildings and to the street are somehow determined from the point of view that we all have been talking about. And I think for that, somebody needs to review and approve that, so...
Can you answer the question the mayor posed, and I have redirected, please?
Yes, ma'am. If the house burned down and there's not a house that they're trying to build that's not in the pattern book, they would have to go through a process. They would need to submit building plans and architectural plans that would be reviewed if the pattern book is adopted, or they could select architectural styles out of here and build to those patterns and be allowed to go through by write, by selecting a pattern.
But you're saying being reviewed, utilizing what criteria?
The pattern book. The pattern book has specific...
But it's not in the pattern book.
Oh, if, then they would, then you would need an architect. That's where the development review committee...
I'm sorry, this is just the beginning.
No, they're saying that whoever's building is selecting something that's not in the pattern book.
They still have to respond to architectural standards. In addition to the styles, there are standards for every building type, and that standard addresses, massing and composition, roof type...
Okay, I understand, but we're having a different conversation, and it's a process question, and what I'm proposing, city manager, is, and I hate using the example of someone's house burns down, but if there's an empty lot in an established neighborhood, I don't think that that property owner should have an onus of going through extra hoops to build a house that looks like the houses around it.
So, Matt, isn't the way to resolve that is when we adopt character districts, that we can identify the types of architecture that already exist, that whether we like them or not, because we're not trying to change what they are, we're acknowledging what they are, that for whatever reason a circumstance comes in, that we're not making it difficult for somebody to do what already is there?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. And so, what you could do is take an average of the bulk massing orientation of the windows, and those characteristics could be the determining architectural patterns.
So, in that instance, what I hear you saying is, is that there could be a series of questions that could be asked based on what the architecture is around the property that's trying to be built, and that could then dictate what got built back so that it fit. Because we all know that, and I use this when I teach, that when you have a beautiful area and something happens and you have to tear down a structure, if you're not careful, if you put back what is in 2019, you have artificially created a ceiling of property values, that then it flies in the face of what we're trying to do, which is fiscal sustainability. So, the end game of this pattern book is the policy statement that then could be driven by those questions, that whatever goes back or is built new in that area has to be an extension of what is there, so it doesn't become the ceiling that prevents that community to age appropriately.
Yes, ma'am.
Cross me on the ceiling.
The ceiling is the artificial property values, because when you've got something that's odd, it devalues everything around it. It creates an artificial ceiling instead of letting the market handle it because the neighborhood all looks alike, and then it just ages gracefully. When you've got that odd man out, it negatively impacts everything around it, because who wants to live next door to the odd man out?
And so, then it could be, then it goes down until the odd man out's everywhere, and then it could potentially go back up.
That's right.
But you understand my process question, is that making sense here? So, however you do it with architectural styles, if we need to, maybe the deed restrictions and homeowner's restrictions take care of it in the two areas, but I just don't think it's fair to put an undue burden on someone to build that fits the character district that the property exists in.
We have an example over on Church Street, next door to the Oregon House. There is a, they sold off part of their property, and they built, there's not another bungalow on the street, but there are plenty of them in that character district. So, they came in and put a bungalow, a craftsman bungalow. So they came in and put a bungalow, a Craftsman bungalow. Doesn't look like the house next door to it. Doesn't look like anything on the lot. But it works. And I don't know how we did it, how we achieved that as a city. I don't know, planning, I'm sure planning was involved, but it's exactly what y'all are talking, we're all talking about.
So let, let us debate that, not tonight, to figure that out.
I'm just trying to think of the other side.
I think that's important.
That's the whole thing. We need to find a way to make different styles of building coexist on the same street.
Yes.
And that's what we're looking. They need to be the certain scale within themselves and all the certain scale towards the other buildings. They don't have to be these styles. I'm sorry if you misunderstood us. There are other, there are other ways of building, but these buildings need to be consistent. In certain ways, they will be determined through architectural standards. The way they do porches, the way you select the roofs, the way you use materials, whether you stop them at a corner, turn them around four or five feet, stuff like that.
Are y'all, are y'all comfortable with the level of detail that a pattern book would suggest?
I am.
I'm, I'm not, I'm not real sure that I am. I appreciate the institutional knowledge. I appreciate, appreciate the presentation. But I felt like I'm in the eighth grade, we're out of textbooks, I've gotten a lecture from a teacher, and there's a pop quiz Friday. And I, you know, without having some sort of reference material, having some sort of defined or definitions in there, I just don't feel I can, I can have an informed discussion with anybody on this. It's great, pretty pictures and everything, but I, I can't answer your question, Linda.
So, so let me ask the question at a 50,000-foot level when the answer to the test doesn't matter. Are you interested in taking the test? That's the question. Part of the, part of the, the issue with the pattern book is, is that you can make recommendations, but if nobody is made to follow it, then the question becomes, why'd you bother? Because what we're going to get is their set of plans that they've built everywhere else, and they've brought that to Bastrop. The reason that this pattern book is being brought to you is the authentic Bastrop piece of your purpose statement. Part of what we don't want to do is to lose who we are. And when you look at the DNA of downtown, we've got gridded streets, we've got designs of houses that while they are innovative, imitated, whatever the, the adjective you want to use, for the most part, they work. But throughout downtown, there's a handful that don't fit and they stand out. It's not that they're good or bad, it's just they don't fit and they stand out. So part of what we are trying to accomplish with this exercise is to meet your purpose statement of making sure that we are authentic Bastrop. Because if you don't, the home builders that show up are going to give you their product that they've had designed, and we get to be grateful for it. And if that meets your standard of authentic Bastrop, then we don't need a lot of detail in the pattern book. But what we're looking for tonight is some direction on your comfort level of how much supervision do you want to provide the market so that we don't look like every other community? That we maintain our authentic Bastrop? And we get the things that we're willing to hold out for? Because this I do know. There is a group of developers that are going to tell you, there's no market for this, you're killing development. I also know there's a school of developers that will do what you make them do because the market's good. And I would argue that our market's good and they'll rise to whatever occasion you cause them to do. That's the policy question we need some guidance on. Is how much of this are you willing to dictate to the market? Or are you happy for the market to come and give you what they want you to have?
And if I may, there are certain elements that we could put in here that would recommend. If you're building a Craftsman house, the, the open eaves with the rafter tails, you know, coming out exposed, that's a real Craftsman. So you could pick maybe three elements, you know, paired or tapered columns on stone bases. All Craftsman houses have that structure. The front porch location is going to be determined by the code already. And so now it's just the key elements that make the Craftsman house, a Craftsman house, so that you're not blending Greek Revival with Craftsman elements and you get a Frankenstein building at the street edge that does not communicate what it's trying to become. Our buildings used to say, I am a library. Look at me, I am a library. I communicate, I am a library. I am an elementary school. Look at me, I communicate to you, I'm an elementary school. And the elementary school here does that. You can feel it. Our new elementary schools, they could be prisons, they could be elementary schools, they could be numerous institutional-type facilities. They're not communicating what they are. The intent with the pattern book is to clearly communicate the architectural element by a few key pieces of the architecture that should carry forward. That's, that's the intent.
Well, I'm on board with the pattern book.
Hang on, just, just one quick second. Because I want to finish. Lyle made a comment, Linda asked him a question, and I want to give him an opportunity to respond.
Don't misconstrue what I said. I, I want to learn. I believe in, in the concept of a pattern book. Unfortunately, my, my limited understanding creates a, a void that needs to be filled with information that I can process. So I'm, I'm in on the concept. I'm just not in on the implementation as far as my thought process goes.
Fair enough, thank you.
And I think the point is, you know, you're flipping through pages. We're seeing four big pictures of four different buildings. And so it's hard to say that's a level too much or too little because we can't really tell what you're suggesting to, to regulate. Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Oh, Councilwoman Peterson?
Yes, we, we've kicked this around for about a half hour, looking at the pattern book and so forth. But this goes right back to Form Base Code for different areas. You have to put, you know, neat, well, you don't have to, but you could, you need to put in like houses in like neighborhoods. And that's bottom line. And we've, we've discussed that over the years through Form Base Code. So that's what it was all about.
Which is my point. Because there have been houses that have been destroyed. And what's been put, which I hear y'all talking about, has just not been proportionately accurate. And it's just a travesty. You know, what you're trying to do is just create, seems like some standards of consistency. And I'm for that.
Well, Mayor Lieutenant Nelson makes a very good point. I think you haven't had enough information for you to make an informed judgment about this. And I think we need to, in the next week or two, supply you with a lot more information that would make this probably a lot more clear in your head.
I think that, that would be helpful. And then the process question that you and I were talking about, I think we need to address as well.
And I like what Councilmember Jones said, the standards of consistency.
Right.
I think that, that offers a lot of clarity that keeps it from being too much.
Correct.
And yes, I have that written down and, and some thoughts about how we can get that.
There has to be a balance between some suggestions and, and what to follow so that you can, to Councilmember Peterson's point, have a like house in a like neighborhood and not be so restrictive that now you have to hire a professional architecture, architect and, you know, and we've, there's just, there's got to be a balance. And, and it's hard for us to say what that balance is because we're listening to lots of words that we can't, you know, that we can't really see with, in perspective of the pattern book. Because I think the pattern book's a lot more than these pictures and the paragraph you read.
Yes, ma'am.
I think there's be another, there will be another challenge for us. And that is how to work with, with the track home builders to really get to work with what we are trying to accomplish. And there are some, like David Winkley has already actually modified their product to fit the requirements of some of the master plans. So I think that's.
Well, and again, I think the distinction also is infill and new development. Because the, the new development could be a new character district and, and then it's, it's, to Councilmember Peterson's point, it's not a like house because there, if it's all new houses and a new development, you might, we might allow some different things that don't exist anywhere else in town if they are, that may be the very way to have the, the imitation of the past and, and to see it slightly revised and we can be historically hip. But we can't be historically hip next to, next to Riverside Grove, next to Hunter's Crossing, things have, that's the whole point of the character districts, it seems. Has that been helpful to you?
It has been helpful to me. And I think that that will provide us an opportunity to come back on the 14th with some good information.
Okay.
And if it is at all possible, having the presentations ahead of time certainly, certainly helps.
Yes.
Okay, are we done with that item? Or you have some more things? All right. So we've got three items, four, four, five items left. 8A is update and discussion of current legislative session and its impact on local municipalities. Most of you know that Senate Bill 2 passed at a 3.5%. There are no carve-outs, but there are also no certificate of obligations included in the bill that passed the Senate. The Senate passed their bill, passed it over to the House. The House was going to hear it on the 15th. They delayed it to the 24th. And I, to my understanding, it's been delayed again to the 30th, which tells me they're all negotiating, April 30th. They're, they're, they're chit-chatting in the hallways because they're not ready to vote on it yet. So, and that's all I'm going to say about that. 8B, presentation and discussion regarding public realm and open spaces versus parkland dedication. Mr. Jobe.
So Mayor and Council, the point of this conversation tonight is not to cause you to make any decisions. It is to start just explaining what our challenge is and some of the things we need you to begin to think about. We have done this consistently with parking, with lighting standards, where we need to talk about it, give y'all some perspective on what we need. And y'all seem to just ask the right questions or pose the right question that then gives us the direction we need. This is one of those occasions. So with that, Trey?
Thank you, Mayor and Council, City Manager. So we'll just talk about parks and, and public versus the public realm and why they're important, what the difference is, and what's right for Bastrop. Or we won't decide what's right for Bastrop tonight, but we're going to look at it from a 50,000-foot view of what we need to start thinking about. So here you have some parkland. You see on the right is a picture of Fisherman's Park in the fall. You've got some public space in your public realm, which kind of connects people together, leads them to your destinations like your parks, but allows them to congregate and just interconnect with each other by chance, by bumping each other, whatever needs to happen. Really about moving multiple modes of transportation, not just vehicular. So again, the parkland should be looked at holistically. And that's what we're going to talk about tonight. I've got a couple of maps in here from the comprehensive plan that we'll go, I'd ask you to go back and review your Chapter 7 later on and, and take a look at those. So some of the stuff we're going to need future policy guidance on is the calculations for parkland dedications. Currently, we don't accept anything under three acres. But I don't think that's going to be the intent with the new code. We might have some small neighborhood parklets or parks that are here and there. We need to talk about the park development fees, possibility of fees in lieu of, credit for open space, again, minimum size. And then do we want to continue to accept things in the floodplain? I think we do. But that's just a discussion we're going to have to have.
Mayor and Council, one of the things that is supremely important is for us to acknowledge that we are adding a new definition of a park. And the new definition of park is public realm. It is by its very nature in our code intended to be small in space. It is intended to be, it, it could be.
There's going to be plazas, there's going to be courtyards, there's going to be civic space.
Very small.
Lots of, lots of one-acre public realm type of places to hang out.
And they may not even be an acre. It, it may be just a, you know, a quarter of an acre where you might have a bench, some kind of public art. It's intended for walkability, for you to every so often have an ability to stop, be comfortable, enjoy the outdoors, again, for you to feel comfortable. And so part of what we are, and the reason we have listed all of this future policy guidance is how you will interact with public realm, how we will maintain public realm is supremely different than parks. Parks have been traditionally very large destinations. Fisherman's Park is a huge park.
Yes.
Bob Bryant is a huge park.
Yes.
So all of our policies related to parks are huge. Public realm and the walkability allows for us to take very small space. That may again just have a bench and a trash can. Or it might have a very small-scale neighborhood playground on it. It might be the streetscape that has trees and some plantings that have seasonal color in it that make you feel good about walking up and down the street. Those are things that we can't, don't currently accept, don't currently program, don't currently pay much attention to, but in a walkable community, they're paramount. And so the part of this conversation tonight is to help you begin to understand that we are going to have to manage both. And we can't take a one-size-fits-all approach on how we view parks. And that's really the context that you're asking them to consider future policy guidance from.
That is correct. Some of the criteria that, when you're making those decisions, will it be, do we want to give credit for providing swimming pools or playgrounds, just like you were talking about? There's a good example of one in Pecan Park. I'll bet there's not even a thousand square foot of just green space where they have a nice little playscape in there and all the kids go out there and play when they get off of school. It's just a one small, and wouldn't they get credit for that for their parkland as part of open space? You know, and what?
Credit for it. Who gets credit? So currently, we have a parkland dedication ordinance that requires developers to dedicate acreage. And so we're going to change that philosophy because the thought is, is that we won't build big complexes. Big complexes require an automobile. And so you have to get in the car and you have to drive.
And have parking.
And you have to have parking. The thought is, is that you will have small-scale parks where you'll have a couple of ball fields. So the kids in the neighborhood can ride their bike to a ball practice. And then what they can do is there's a number of, of ball fields throughout the community and you just circulate where you play. And instead of having a destination where everybody goes, it allows the neighborhoods to, to be able to go back to, kids don't have to be chauffeured after school, they can ride their bike and participate.
A great example is Fireman's Park with the ball fields right there in the middle of the neighborhood downtown.
Yep.
So people walk there and play all the time.
What do these 10% mean?
This, I'm just, I just have some criteria and do we want to get 10% credit towards their, so, so this would give you, if you took care of all of these items, you would get 50% towards your parkland dedication requirement.
This is intended to be an example?
This is just an example, that's correct.
Because we are looking for.
Towards the, like, if our current ordinance would require you have to have 50 acres of park?
Yes.
Then would you say, well, I will, we'll take 30 if you'll give us a pool?
That's exactly right.
So, and I, but the engineering me needs to not get caught up on the 10% or whatever. We can talk about that later. The real question is, are we, is councils, what are your thoughts of trading off these types of things?
I think this is a really good idea. And I know that when I'm up north and you take a walk with your kids, all of a sudden they'll just be like a merry-go-round in a swing set, just like in an area smaller than that little cubby over there. And it's just a fun place to stop. And I think it's a great idea. And, and with the direction, Trey and Curtis will take this to the park board. Because to get into the minutias, their job, just like P&amp;Z. But we got to have some bumper lanes of, of where we go. Because we're, we're going to have to unravel what we've always done and create something very different to embrace walkability. And that's the point of tonight's conversation.
Yes, yeah. It's not the percentages that we have up here, but we're just willing to take some, some different property in trade, I guess.
I think, I think I'm in agreement with Councilwoman Jones. I mean, this, creating a linear walkability public area as opposed to taking a huge swath of land and putting a park in there is, is a better land use as far as I'm concerned. But it also creates a sense of community.
Yes, I agree.
That's, that's unique. And I think our, our citywide trail that we're, that we're in the process of putting in place is a perfect example of that. I mean, I, I know that there's been several discussions how that can be utilized as more than just a pedestrian pathway. And so I, carry on, sir.
I agree.
And the only other thing that I, like, I'm completely fine with all of the swap-offs, but I would think at the end of the day, there needs to be some monetary consideration, you know, the, and, and what the impact is to the city. Like, I'm, I'm not sure we need to get into maintaining a whole bunch of pools, but if, if a developer's going to put in a neighborhood pool, that shouldn't, the, the expense of that and the upkeep of that shouldn't translate to the same credit.
that and the upkeep of that shouldn't translate to the same credit percentage of putting out one tennis court. You know, I mean, there's gotta be some equity in, in effort.
And I think the HOA would generally maintain something like that, but we would give them credit instead of giving fifty acres of parkland. You could give twenty-five and put in a pool, or something like that.
Yeah, and just some logic to, to how the credits work.
And, and I think part of the fiscal sustainability is, is, to your point, we have to be careful about what we're assuming, um, versus the, and the operational impact, but, um, those are amenities that the community wants, so if a developer's willing to build it and willing to find a mechanism to pay for it, are we willing to reward them? That's the question.
Yes.
But, and, but we also have to know that sometimes those homeowners' associations...
Go defunct.
Thank you.
Yes.
And guess what? Then that becomes ours by default.
Um, that just means we're gonna fill up a, a swimming pool, and it's gonna become a flowerbed.
Bingo. Yeah.
Let's, let's remember the challenges of, of the PID, which has a common area in there.
That's right.
Which can be tied to public realm, so...
Challenging. I understand.
Again, just, don't, it, no good deed goes unpunished. Don't, don't let us get into a situation where we've, we've become our own worst enemy in a future council's, like, what were they thinking?
Sure.
We just need to be cautious of that.
And I, I truly think we're talking about in our, in the city-maintained public realm is areas that, interaction with the private and the street. All right? And so, that's more of what I think the public realm's gonna turn into, but you'll have nodes, small parks along the way that we would have to maintain.
Councilmember Peterson, is this sounding okay to you to have some trade-offs? Councilmember Ennis, I can't, are you okay with the trade-offs?
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
Perfect. Um, again, uh, both spaces for parks and public realms, great place to interact. Um, you know, it promotes social cohesion. There's lots of folks that get to meet each other in the park just for an event, or on your way, taking a stroll up and down that riverwalk. I'm sure people meet all the time. Um, again, I think you wanna give us some direction on defining the city neighborhood. So, have you got your districts that you're talking about? Do we want, this is a picture of downtown, right, at Christmas time. And, uh, what's there is what we're used to, and I think that kinda defines your character district and what you're looking for. So, regionally, I think we wanna think of the same thing when it comes to what the cultural value is, what's the history of the place, kinda all goes with the districts. Same thing with the small parks, right? There's a, there on the bottom is the, the Kerr Community Center, uh, which is representative of the neighborhood that it sits in.
One of the things that I think is, is worth noting, um, once we adopt these codes, all of these elements have to have some kind of operational support. And so, we'll be coming back and, and addressing the, uh, financial aspects of that, um, and it's, and it's a journey, not necessarily a destination, but in this moment, I, I want to point out that the public realm is going to require a different level of operational support than your parks do. And so, this is, public realm gets taken care of like your front yard. Um, very different than your parks. And so, long-term fiscal sustainability is easy, because there's development out there that will ultimately generate enough wealth that you hope it pays for it. But in the meantime, we're going to have to be able to support this and, and make this what it is in our minds today, waiting on the growth to happen. It, it's the chicken and the egg. You build it, and they will come. So, part of the conversation that we'll have over, um, the next, you know, sixty days is while this is great, I want you to always remember that our pocketbook is involved. There is going to be some of these things that we can tie to a development, we can tie to a homeowners' association, but in infield, none of that exists.
That's right.
So, in the greens, green, uh, infield, I'm not, I'm sorry, the green open space that you would see in the meadows, the Cattlemen's District, where there's big tracts of land, you can put the financial mechanisms in place, like your PIDs and all of that, that will make this happen. But downtown and some of your more established character zones, these things are just as important there for walkability as they are in the new development, but somebody's gotta pay for it, and that somebody is likely, uh, the city and the taxpayer. So, as we move forward, we just have to balance where we are to where we wanna be and know that that's a journey. It may take a decade, it may take fifteen, twenty years, kinda like we've done with the lighting standards. We've agreed that we're gonna add additional lighting for walkability, but what we've not said is, we're gonna do it next year. We're gonna build a plan, we're gonna execute the plan. And this same conversation will have to happen here with the, with the public realm.
So, that's a perfect transition to my next slide, where you, in the, in the public realm, you may see some screening walls that have to be installed. You can see a lot more plants, a lot more flowerbeds, much more like your front yard, uh, which will require a different type of maintenance. And then, that's just a picture of the river. Everybody goes to Fisherman's for the river, um, and, again, it's a destination spot, uh, but the public realm is what gets you there. Um, this is a, just a map from the Parks and Open Space, if you can currently see, uh, and I know this is in your packet, but if you'll look and see currently what we have, this is a map from the, um, Comprehensive Plan. Sorry, I'm a little tired. Um, this is a, a, a land map as well, that show where our parks are and where there is overlap. Uh, this one here shows what's proposed in the Comprehensive Plan. Um, so you have all these service districts, you can see where the parks are, and you can see where the parks are missing. Um, so this is something I'd encourage you to go back and look at, 'cause regionally, this is what your future's gonna hold, um, and that's just something we're gonna have to take care of in the future.
Trey, are, am I overlooking Delgado Park on here?
It is, it was not...
Yes, because it was built after the comp plan.
That's correct.
Oh, is this straight out of the comp book?
Yes, sir.
So, one of the things, and, and I know that people get tired of the fact that we build plans, but the truth of the matter is, is if you're in the city's business, you always have a plan, and you're always working on a plan. Um, and, and it will be probably two years out, but one of the things that would be on a future work plan is we desperately need to update our Parks Master Plan, because if there is a master plan that is no longer in step with the comp plan and the fiscal sustainability, it will be your Parks and Master Plan, because I would argue that, that we're not gonna have a lot of community parks, we're gonna have a lot more neighborhood parks, and we will have way more trail network and things like that that aren't currently reflected. So, um, at this point in time, I think that, um, we've gotten some very positive nods and a lot of, of input that suggests this is the right direction, and we will craft some policy conversations for, uh, the Parks, um, Board to review and bring it back to you, so we can put this by place, type, and characteristic.
Council, are you okay with that? Any other comments? Councilmember Jones?
Well, I just was gonna say, I mean, to me, it just sounds like the comp plan's been really great. It's taken us, uh, down the road, but there's just a lot of, of portions of it that need to be updated and brought into step.
Yes.
And maybe some areas that have been ignored that maybe, now that we've taken another look, we're realizing that that's the case, so...
Yep.
I think it's doing its job.
You're exactly right. That's what you've seen in these maps. These are proposed, but we have to do the study to get there.
That's right.
So... That is pretty much it, if you wanna move on.
All right. Thank you, Trey.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Eight D, presentation and policy. How are we doing on time? It's been, it was, Matt was an hour and a half. Are you guys okay? We have two, three more items.
Hurry.
Hurry, they're saying. Eight D, presentation and policy discussion regarding nuisance ordinances and how they relate to public education and enforcement. Chief Altgeld.
I just wanted to give you a quick overview. We're talking about nuisances and how we wanna codify them and address them all in one, stop shopping, if you will, so that when we make one change, it impacts the code everywhere, and our, our customers, our citizens can go to one place and understand what constitutes a nuisance and what does not constitute a nuisance, and we don't have to...
And Chief, the reason that we're doing this is we're no longer gonna be regulating uses.
That's correct.
So, your ability to enact any kind of enforcement is gonna come from the nuisance.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay. So, I took a journey on this, and when I Googled nuisance in our ordinances, out of the fourteen chapters that we have, it was listed fifty-five different times in fifty-five different ordinances. So, it kind of, I'm a little overwhelmed right now. Um, but what we did not do...
But not surprised.
But, uh...
Well, yeah.
I, I, I didn't think it'd be fifty-five, so, ma'am, I was surprised. Um, but what we did not do is have a, a common definition for nuisance. So, I went through the dictionary, and it just says, "It's harm or injury, or one that is annoying, unpleasant, or obnoxious." So, we started off on Chapter One in our general provisions, and what I'm gonna do is just go through the fourteen chapters very quickly, give you just a few ideas of what it is, and talk about some of the, the direction that we're looking for, and get guidance on you for that policy, so we can come back and, and start to go to work. But in Chapter One, we just talked about the, the fines for a nuisance, and so when we declare something in the code as a nuisance, it's a Class C misdemeanor, it's a violation of city ordinance, which means it's a fine not to exceed five hundred dollars. There is no jail time tied with that. However, if it's an ordinance that deals with fire, safety, zoning, public health or sanitation, the municipal court can actually exercise a fine up to two thousand dollars. Still no jail time, but a pretty substantial fine. In Chapter Two, when we talk about animal control, the nuisances that first get to signs, there's any animal other than a protected animal that unreasonably annoys humans, endangers the life or health of persons, or other animals, or substantially interferes with the rights of citizens other than their owners to the enjoyment of life or property. As you can see by this definition, that's pretty broad and very subjective, and so what may be annoying to one may be pleasant to others, and so, it's almost like deja vu with the chickens as far as trying to enforce something like this, but it makes some people feel good when we put it in the ordinance. We have some requirements that if, and for some case, we have a, a kennel that's in the public in the city, it can, if it becomes a nuisance, we have the ability to, to take care of it. Once again, what's that nuisance and how's it defined? Hard to say. And we have, if somebody actually started to have commercial sales of animals, if we had a, a, I don't wanna say a puppy farm, but, but a registered kennel that was selling them for commercial purpose, for commercial purposes, we also have the ability to, uh, to regulate it if it became a nuisance. When we went to Chapter Three in the building regulations, we talked about unsafe or endangered buildings or structures, and throughout there, when we go to, to several different sections in here, we're talking about buildings, any portion that is, that is, uh, or, or portion of the structure that's in such a condition as to constitute a public nuisance. Well, what's that public nuisance? Well, we probably have to go to back and use some, get some guidance from our attorney to talk about, is it unsafe? Is it put in, in a position where it's, it's, it's a potential fire trap? Is it abandoned and, and, uh, ran down to the point where it's, it's a danger for children to go in there, um, and, and could be a nuisance in that way? But, once again, it's still pretty, pretty vague when we talk about that. We talk about a nuisance for flood damage prevention, and it talks, once again, that the granting of a variance in its, um, when we're talking about buildings, will not result in increased flood heights, additional threats to public safety, extraordinary public expense, or create nuisances, cause fraud or victimization of the public, conflict with existing local laws or ordinances.
So, to give you some examples, and I can assure you, he's not gonna beat you up with all fifty-five of these, but...
No.
Unsafe or dangerous buildings or structures are gonna be taken care of the I-code. So, one of the things we can tell you tonight is, we're not gonna regulate that there. Y'all have been very clear that the international codes need to be referenced, and unsafe or dangerous buildings, you're gonna find that. Your flood damage prevention, guess what? You started tonight with a flood ordinance that's gonna finally take care of that, so this is one of those things that would come out of that. Um, the mobile home parks, the same thing. It ought to be addressed in the international codes, and in rather than reinventing the wheel and causing somebody to look in multiple places, we're just going to fix these things by referencing the link to the principal document that drives the ship.
The same with recreational vehicle parks, and we had quite a presentation today about signs, so, once again, all of these will be things that we won't have the redundancy. When we go to make a change, we don't have to worry about looking at fourteen different locations or fifty-five different locations to make sure, to make sure that we do not have ordinances that conflict with each other and confuse the public. Uh, Chapter Four, we talk about peddlers, solicitors, and vendors, and so, they can become a nuisance, and we have the right to control some of that. Also, your basic litter control and trash removal. I will submit to you that we have codes on the books right now that talk about littering and what constitutes littering and things like that, so that may be something that we wanna address also, because it's kinda like the, the ordinance that we repealed this evening about, why have something that state law already has, and almost like exactly the same, the same duties? It's just one more thing that they have on the books. Um, when we get to Chapter Six, it deals strictly with public nuisances, and then in Chapter Six, that we talk about, um, we, we talk about, uh, certain things such as health and sanitation and, and things that I would suspect that the, excuse me, I apologize. Um, okay. Well, yeah, doesn't work the same. He's a big boy. Okay. Public nuisances. Um, we talk about health and sanitation. We talk about improperly maintained and substandard buildings. Once again, the I-codes would, would, would come back to that. We talk about, um, violations that are then declared to be a nuisance and how we can abate that, and then there's ways in the ordinances how we, we can, uh, recoup those, uh, costs that we have to do if we actually have to go through a formalized abatement by the cities, to include exercising a lien if need be. When we go to Chapter Seven, when we talk about the jurisdictional limits of the court, all this does is just give the courts, uh, the, the authority to, to hear these cases on a criminal matter and potentially a civil matter if need be, and gives them the exercise of the jurisdiction to, to exercise the fines that we've initially talked about at the beginning. We get to, uh, Chapter Eight, and we talk about abandoned vehicles, and the differences between abandoned vehicles and junk vehicles, um, that come through there, and basically, once again, state law deals with, with abandoned vehicles and what constitutes abandoned vehicle on public pri, on public property or in the right-of-way, and junk vehicles primarily deals with what type of vehicle you have on your, your personal, private property, and whether or not, um, it, it meets that criteria and it becomes a nuisance and gives us the ability to have you take care of it, and if not take care of it, we could actually end up abating that if need be. There's also provisions throughout the ordinances that talk about if we can't locate an owner, how we have to give notice, and if, after we take those steps, if we can't find the owner, we can still take care of the problem and, and go from that way. Uh, when we talk about noise, uh, the noise, oops, there we go. When we talk about noise, that's actually the first place in the ordinance where there's a quantifiable measurement, if you will. We talk about decimal leaders, and we have two different types of, uh, we have a nighttime reading and a daytime reading. And I wanna say that, um, one is a, of course, your nighttime is slightly slower, I believe it's eighty-five or eighty decimals, and daytime is eighty-five decibels, but that...
And this is the first time that a nuisance that would regulate use appears.
Yes. Yes. Um, and the, the thing to take in mind is, and what, what becomes very difficult is, is, um, is if I'm playing music very loud at my house, you don't take it from my property. If the mayor's the complainant, we take it from the mayor's property. If it doesn't meet the decimal leader, uh, decimal meter reading, then it's not deemed to be a nuisance at that point. Um, and then, when we talk about buildings, uh, there's a definition for attractive nuisances, and, um, which, if you, I know it's getting late and things, but we, we, we identify that, but, once again, to me, it is somewhat still subjective, um, when we go from there.
Attractive nuisances, um, have to be managed from a litigation standpoint, because typically, when you have an attractive nuisance, you're protecting from a child. A swimming pool is a great example. It needs to be fenced, because children cannot read, and there is a sense of responsibility that you have to protect them from themselves, because they don't know better. So, an attractive nuisance is one of those things that, from a litigation standpoint, we need to make sure that it's got all the protection, um, that we, as a community, want, not just state law, because sometimes community standards, um, would, would dictate the nuisance. But, an attractive nuisance, um, is one of those things that become a code enforcement issue that, um, people could get up in arms about quickly, and we may want more authority than the state.
Yes, and it's, that's almost textbook, ma'am. It's potentially harmful logic or circumstance on property or condition of the property so inviting or interesting to a child that would lure the child on the property to investigate. That would also go back to the example that we gave earlier about a, a home that was dilapidated and, and possible for that. Um, when we get to our traffic code, we talk about unauthorized devices. That deals with a lot of people putting signs that shouldn't be there, or their own types of variations of signs they take there. And then, we talk about stopping, standing, and parking. And when we go from there, it's not just what's basically in the state law, but it deals with, excuse me, what does it deal with, James? About inoperable vehicles. So, the title makes it somewhat misleading, where you would think it was X amount of feet from a fire hydrant, or a crosswalk, or official traffic control device. But we talk about leaving stopped vehicles, once again, and it ties back to junk vehicles and abandoned vehicles. And so, once again, there's a potential for conflict, because we addressed that earlier in the nuisances, and now we address it yet again in Chapter 12. So, there's a bit of redundancy, if you will, that comes in from there. We move on to utilities, and here we talk about things that are, don't have the knowledge that Trey and the other people do, but we talk about discharge of industrial waste into public sewer systems. I know that we've dealt with that locally with some businesses that didn't have the proper traps that into there. That's in there. I don't know if that would be addressed in the other codes. I suspect they probably are.
One of the things that we'll be adopting, and it's called FOG, it is fats, oils, and grease that is part of the discharge. And when you've got commercial businesses that violate your permit. So, part of what we'll be doing, and we'll just jump to the next steps, is next Thursday, we have, or next Wednesday, we're spending quite a bit of time with, as staff, to go through and identify a better way to make our codes of ordinances more user-friendly. We have a follow-up meeting with Allen on Thursday. And the reason that James is presenting this to you tonight is what we thought would be a fairly benign and easy conversation is not. That's exactly right. We really anticipated going to the nuisance section of the Code of Ordinance and find the things we would traditionally find as nuisance, and only one of them appeared. And so, the point of this to tell you is, is that in order to regulate nuisances, not uses, it is going to be a more complex process than originally thought. And before it's all said and done, I think we will redo the entire Code of Ordinances to make them way more user-friendly, get the inconsistencies out of it. So, not only are we going to solve the development part of this, but in order to solve the development part of this, you're going to have to deal with a whole lot of other things. But once you fix it, hopefully, it will be fixed. And that's really the essence of this conversation.
Exactly. And we talked about, what would you like a user, like, go back to our sensory perception, sight, line of sight, which is distance, lumens, which we know is another way to identify lighting, as our foot candles. When we talk about sensory, we talked about decibel readings, sound wave frequencies, and then also spells and odors. Believe it or not, there's actually devices that will detect certain types of odor, natural gas, biogas, landfill gas, LPG gas, syn gas. But when it just stinks, I don't know how we can quantify that and how we would go from there. So, like the city manager says, much more challenging than we have. She's outlined our next steps, but I know that we've been telling you for the last two to three council meetings that this was coming, and we didn't want you to think that we were just saying that. It started, but it's a much bigger field to cut than we thought.
You talked about the FOG, the fats, oils, and grease. And the other thing that I would just throw out is the heads and tails of the distillery process. That may be in that same category, that you want to address that, because that can have some unique consequences that go along with that. Any other suggestions for Chief Alk Gelt? We look forward to you simplifying and making it efficient and keeping us from having nuisance. And it's like every other rule we've talked about. We've got to have enough structure around it that we, that you guys have a chance of enforcing it, and we have a chance, we know what we're consistently, what the expectations are.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, Ms. Waldron, she's been on deck, but now she's up. We're on 9B. Received presentation on Quarterly Investment Report for the period ending March 31, 2019.
Brevity.
No, yes.
Don't you worry. Maybe. Alright, so this is your quarterly investment report for the period ending March 31. And just wanted to point out, the ending balance in December was almost $31 million. Our ending balance in March 31 is just about the same amount. And here's, you can see how our investments are divided between the pools and the CDs, very little in money market, and then our demand account. Interest was good. It's gone down a little bit, but it had increased. So, we're seeing a pretty, a pretty good amount of interest over the last couple of years. Total interest year-to-date is $332. My contacts are failing me this late in the evening.
Yep, $332.5.
And that's all I have for the quarterly report.
You are excellent. We think you're fabulous. Everybody okay if she keeps going? Alright, 9C, Received Presentation on the Unaudited Monthly Financial Report, March 31.
Should be a very easy report. Everything is pretty positive. I'm going to hit basically the highlights on the revenue. I mean, we still have forecasts against actual, and the impact fees. And we've explained why we're seeing that. That's very hard to predict. And a little bit of warning on the cemetery. We're just behind in sales over historical, so can't really predict that either. So, on the expense side, Hunter's Crossing Pid with the legal fees. And I will be bringing a budget amendment in the next few months on that one. General fund is positive. Sales tax is just 2% over, so it's running very close to forecast. Property tax is 1%, so we're very on track with that. Water wastewater fund is a net positive 7%. Its revenue is a little over 1%, which is good. Electric is 5% net positive, and their revenues are just about break even. Hot tax fund is 12% over forecast. Their revenue is just slightly 2% over forecast, which is good. And the year-to-date against last year, I've been kind of watching that, is back up. We've closed the gap, so now we're at $1,000 down from last year. So, and our legal breakout, and that's all I have for that.
Any questions for Ms. Waldron, counsel? Good job. Thank you, Tracy. Appreciate having the clarity. Alright, Mr. Peterson, we're on item 13.
Motion to adjourn.
It is 11:11, and we are adjourned.